Six o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call our work session to order. And I will do a review of tonight's city council meeting agenda in case council has any questions for staff for them to prep. Um, will there be any proposed changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing then, um, what about a public comment? Jeff, have we had any online or in-person signups yet?
No signups. There was, there was an email, what appeared to be maybe public hearing testimony, but no public comments.
Just reminder, everyone, if you want to testify later uh tonight, um, to go ahead and fill out one of the comment cards out front and get you in the queue. Um, are there going to be any responses to any public comments that I can recall?
Uh, Carl Exter provided public comment last time, but there's nothing to respond to, so.
Okay. Uh, consent agenda, we'll have our city council meeting minutes for November eighteenth meeting. Uh, we'll have our planning commission, um, appointments. And we'll have the resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, which is a temporary uh exception of the city manager signing authority to administer on-call construction contracts. Under resolutions, we have a public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, which amends our master fee schedule for the utility rates. Then we also have a second public hearing for resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, which is the extension of the existing moratorium on development. And then under ordinances, we have a public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three, which modifications to chapters one point one six and one point one eight. We'll end the evening with a report from our city manager as well as as committee and council uh reports. Just a reminder to anyone, uh, we have our public comment and then we have our hearings. If you want to speak specifically on one of those items, wait for the right uh public hearing.
You don't have to fill out.
And you do not need to fill out a form for that. Thank you. And with that, let's go and get our work session started. Our wastewater facility plan amendment. Tyler, you wanna get this going?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so the purpose of the work session this evening is to discuss the wastewater facility plan amendment. This has been a long time coming and a long project in the works. Um, just as a refresher, we have uh the twenty nineteen facilities plan that is being amended and we have various members of the public works team and um consulting team, Stan Fek and Leeway Engineering Services that will be here shortly um, to also facilitate this meeting. Um, you know, just as a reminder, we had been planning on updating the twenty nineteen facilities plan for quite some time and we needed to wait for the results of the stress test to be completed before we could move forward with completing the facility plan amendment. That stress test took about a year to actually get wrapped up. And then, of course, it takes time to incorporate those results into the actual plan amendment. Um, you know, just to cut to the chase, there's two uh viable paths forward at this point in time. Uh, you've heard about these uh opportunities just briefly in the past. The first is expansion of the existing wastewater treatment plant with an MBR and then constructing the new pipeline and outfall at Sandy River. And the second option is a regional treatment solution, which would require um piping our untreated waste to City of Gresham for treatment and discharge uh from their facility. Um, you know, staff, just to be transparent right at the front, staff recognizes that both of these projects are extremely expensive and and will require additional outside funding from the state or federal government, as well as future rate increases. I don't want to shy away from just putting that, you know, out into the open right now. This is uh very expensive. Um, rates have already been increased substantially and there's gonna need to be continued rate increases to build the infrastructure that's needed um in order to comply with the consent decree. And we can talk about more of that as the presentation goes on. But I just wanted to to get that out in the open while we dive in too deep.
More expensive or over the deliverability threshold that's been set by the loan.
Yeah, so the WIPI alone dictates, um, or federal guidelines dictate that the rates uh cannot exceed two percent of the median household income. So the rate model ensures that uh the rates do not exceed that two percent threshold. Um, the existing version of the rate model covers almost all of these options, about two hundred million. Um, but that's, you know, a burden on our rate payers, right, to to get to that.
Sure, sure, absolutely. But it's, but I mean, it it can't cover all.
But it can't cover all of it. There is.
So no matter what.
Yep, yep, there is a gap that needs to.
No way for us to put it on the rate pairs, even if.
Exactly.
Even if it worked.
Possible. There is a gap um with both of the project estimate or both of the alternatives that we have, the estimates exceed what the rate model supports as our maximum um affordability. So we'll have continued conversations around that. We'll have continued uh work with the state legislature and meeting with representatives and and state senators on trying to get additional funding, not just to fill that gap, but to also prevent future rate increases as much as physically possible, so that we aren't passing on um, this huge cost just to our rate payers, really at a benefit of the three hundred thousand people that drink the water out of the Clackamas River.
What's the plan if we don't get any money? We get no money from state or feds. What's what's the plan?
Uh, well, that will be a lengthy conversation with the council. I mean, we have a consent decree that mandates that we make a permanent uh fix to our to our issue, right? So we will have to find some intermediate option. Um.
Well, yeah, the consent, we have a consent decree that says that we have to fix our current issue.
Yes, currently we have.
Right, it doesn't say we have to expand.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess worst-case scenario, you fix what you can and you don't grow. We don't get any additional ERUs and Sandy stay is as Sandy is.
Or we find, we find alternatives, right? We find alternatives.
And we've looked at, I mean, Heather and and the Stan Tech team can talk about some of the other alternatives and why they don't really work and why they aren't feasible, uh feasible. Um, but yeah, we would continue to explore any other viable option that we that we could come up with. Um, you know, ultimately, we don't have soil around here that is uh helpful in a um, from a drainage standpoint, it's just clay, so that water doesn't drain anywhere, so we can't really pump it to like a Rossum Lake as as was once discussed. Um, building, you know, a massive storage facility for the treated effluent also really isn't viable from a cost standpoint. We have some preliminary sort of designs on where that would sit and how vast it would need to be to store our wastewater. If you don't have a place to discharge it, uh and you spend almost just as much money to build the storage facility, uh, but not be able to actually put the water anywhere. Um, you know, we'll continue our efforts in working with the state and trying to modify the three base in the rule, but that's only going to get us so much. Uh, because there's still a limitation on how much can be discharged into the creek, no matter how clean the water is. The stream is not flowing as vigorously as it once was and it will continue to probably shrink i- in the foreseeable future. So, um, I mean, the short answer is Sandy just doesn't have any growth. The more nuanced answer is we'll continue to look for viable solutions, but nothing is on the table really right now that is affordable. Otherwise, we'd be presenting that option tonight as well.
Great.
Jeff, any other comments you want to throw in there before we turn it over to Stan Tech?
I think you covered, you've covered it very well. Thank you.
Briefly talked. So I will turn it over to, I don't know who's opening up.
That'd be me.
All right.
Okay, did you wanna, I'm gonna try to get it on the screen too, but go, go ahead.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, so um, so we're here today to talk about the the progress on the facility plan amendment, um, some of our key findings and the the most viable alternatives uh that that we think are uh worth consideration and and moving forward with. So start with a a quick, quick recap of the purpose of the facility plan amendment. There were really uh four primary goals uh for this project and this document. The first was to update flow projections to reflect the uh improvements um to reduce inflow and infiltration or INI the system um that that had been ongoing for the last several years. To apply information gained through the twenty twenty-three stress testing. Um, as Tyler mentioned, that that project took about a year to complete, provided some really good information about what the existing facility is is capable of treating and um how that existing capacity can be optimized. And and the results of that uh analysis are reflected in the recommendations that are made in this facility plan amendment. Um, the third alternative was to examine alternatives uh to comply with the consent decree and provide the capacity needed to support um the growth that the city would like to experience. Um, and then finally to identify the long-term treatment and discharge recommendations uh and short-term compliance strategies to allow the city to continue to uh meet permit, uh meet the consent decree requirements and ultimately get out of the consent decree and uh be able to just fully uh grow and expand as as it desires. All right. So uh first regarding flow and loads, um, what you can see here is the the projected twenty forty design flows um as they were originally um developed in the twenty nineteen facility plan and in the current facility plan amendment, reflecting the INI improvements. Um, so as you can see, the the peak flow capacity has uh had, that's been the target of the INI improvements, is bringing down uh those projected peak flows to the treatment plant. Um, and the efforts that the city has undertaken have been really successful. That peak uh anticipated flow, the peak hour flow to the plant, um, has been reduced by about uh thirty percent um, from seventeen point one MGD in the twenty nineteen plan uh to twelve point two MGD in the plan amendment. So that um, those efforts have gone a long way to to really reducing the scale of the improvements that are going to be needed um moving forward.
Can you just clarify why it went from two to two point two?
Um, that was a a a minor uh update to the um, the dry weather flow.
Okay.
Characteristics um based on the data that was available for the twenty twenty-four plan amendment uh compared to the twenty nineteen plan. All right, uh, so now moving into the treatment uh alternatives that were examined in the facility plan amendment. Um, there are five alternatives that were considered um that are shown here. And and what we're going to be talking about today are the improvements that are needed again um to provide capacity through that twenty twenty or twenty forty planning horizon. So under all of these alternatives um coming towards twenty twenty or twenty forty, yeah, some additional capacity would be needed uh to provide um the ability for for ongoing growth beyond the planning horizon. Uh, so these are, these are focused on the twenty forty planning horizon. And the first three are alternatives that maintain uh treatment at the existing Yarol Road uh treatment plant um with different variations on the type of treatment provided. Um, the first uses uh conventional activated sledge followed by tertiary filtration. So that's uh similar to the existing process that's used at the plant. Um, the second option uses a technology called membrane bioreactors or MBR. Um, that combines uh a treatment process with membrane filtration. Um, so again, provides a high level of treatment and tertiary filtration. Um, and then the third option is a hybrid that retains the existing conventional activated sledge to treat a portion of the flow and then adds membrane bioreactors to treat uh the balance of the flow through twenty forty. So uh those are all solutions at the existing treatment plant, um and they all uh involve a new um pipeline and discharge to the Sandy River. Um, like Tyler mentioned, the existing Tickle Creek, uh, the the limitations on the Tickle Creek discharge uh really don't allow the city uh to continue to grow and maintain that discharge uh into the future uh for the long term. So so those those first three options include the treatment plant expansion and then the new outfall to the Sandy River. Uh, the fourth option is uh pumping to a regional treatment facility that would provide a treatment and discharge for the city's waste. There were two options that were considered, uh the Gresham wastewater treatment plant that's located in in North Gresham along Sandy River or Sandy Boulevard, uh discharges to the Columbia River uh and Water Environment Services Tri-Cities Plant uh that discharges to the Clackamas River. Uh, those were both uh considered. Uh, but the pipeline route to the Gresham treatment plant um is uh about three miles shorter than the route to the Tri-City Plant and and the Gresham Plant also has available capacity. So of those two regional treatment options, um, the Gresham option with the discharge to the Columbia River appears to be the more attractive regional alternative. So that's the one that we'll be talking about tonight. And then the fifth alternative is collection system storage. So this would be building a large basin to hold raw wastewater up in the collection system. Um, so that it, the peak flow doesn't have to be transmitted to the wastewater treatment plant. It would be held until basically the the storm passes and then that flow could be released um and treated within generally within the existing capacity of the plant. There would be some improvements that would be needed at the plant. Um, but the the bigger consideration with that alternative is that there would, there would need to be about three million gallons of raw wastewater storage um somewhere in the city of Sandy. Um, there's only about one, there was only one location identified in the plant that's even viable for a facility like that and and it's next to a neighborhood and and really not a feasible option uh again for a long term.
This would be really clean, small and water.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, this is a, yeah, a a basin a hundred feet by a hundred feet and and forty-five feet deep of pristine wastewater.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, so those are the five alternatives um that are evaluated in the facility plan amendment. And uh if you want to go to the next slide, um, the two that are the most viable alternatives that we're going to be talking about tonight are uh the membrane bioreactor and the regional treatment facility. So of of those three that I talked about that that um stay at the Yarol Road Treatment Plant, the MBR option was the most cost-effective. And of the regional treatment options, uh going to the Gresham facility was the most cost-effective. Um, and those two options, alternative two and alternative four on this figure, um, have costs that are relatively comparable um and but very different considerations. So we're going to talk about um what those are in a little bit more detail. All right, so this is what the MBR alternative looks like. So uh there's, there's more detail in uh the draft uh plan document that was distributed uh with your work session packet. Um, so these are just a couple of snips that show the site plan for that alternative. Um, and then the pipeline alignment for a portion of the new outfall uh or the the new discharge to the Sandy River. Uh, so the plant, under this scenario, the plant would be expanded by constructing a new padworks. Uh, there would be new anoxic and MBR uh process basins. Um, there's UV expansion underway at the plant that would, that would serve this facility in the long term. Um, there would be new solids treatment that includes de-watering, uh drying and storage of the bio solids that that would allow it to be beneficially reused rather than having to go to a landfill. Um, and then uh pumping to Bluff Road and then discharge it by gravity through a pipeline um from that location to approximately Revenue Bridge. Uh, so there have been previous studies completed that showed that the Revenue Bridge site was the optimal location uh on the Sandy River for a new outfall. So that is the, that's the basic um components of the MBR and Sandy River discharge option.
Were those Oxbow sites also the other two considered? Is that what, why they're on there?
Yeah, the Oxbow sites were considered. Um, and I I believe the uh, the um impacts on the the pension, potential environmental impacts at those sites were more significant in terms of, uh, I can't remember exactly if it was fish habitat or what the, what the considerations were. Yeah, the the Revenue Bridge site was the site that was had had the least uh, the least impact and the most um the highest probability of of acceptance in terms of a new discharge point.
And appropriate bit rock, if I remember right.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you.
And as a reminder, not to interrupt, but this would require a new discharge permit, going through that whole process with DEQ to to get um, the authority to discharge here. So what Heather mentions, you know, the the most likely to receive support or approval, it's through that process, the whole lengthy DEQ permitting process that would be required.
Yeah.
But that's the one that's ongoing right now, correct?
Right, I we, I knew in the sense that we don't have a discharge permit.
Right, so that, yeah, that was a a very quick overview. So if there's any more questions about kind of the details of that alternative, uh, we can certainly discuss those. Um, but I wanted to move on to the total cost of this alternative. So in looking at these two, what what we're showing is uh the costs that have been incurred to date, the costs that need to be invested regardless of the alternative um in order to continue to maintain capacity um to ha- allow the city to uh, uh to unlock those remaining ERUs that were in the conditional approval from EPA uh and uh and DEQ and to maintain permit compliance because, you know, meeting, meeting permitted is also a requirement of the consent decree. So having sufficient reliable treatment at the existing plant is is important um for all of these alternatives. So so the costs for the MBR option um include the the phase one A costs are are, that's the work that's been done to date. Um, that has a total uh or um the the value of those improvements are thirty-one million dollars. Um, phase one B is is that component of additional work that's needed no matter what. So that includes um ongoing improvements to the collection system, so additional repairs and rehabilitation um and work that's required at the wastewater treatment plant to provide uh sufficient reliability to treat the the remaining ERUs and continue to meet permit.
So, so there's, so there's different costs and improvements that need to be made to our current wastewater treatment plant depending on what feature we we choose.
Uh, there are improvements that need to be made at the wastewater treatment plant, uh regardless of which alternative you you um select, but it's the same, it's the same improvements either way.
But uh but I, right, in the, but it.
But not in 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 the twelve million it's captured, but the seventy-eight million.
That's.
Those are additional if we choose this path, but that number is probably dramatically different if we choose another alternative, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What we have to do at our current plant changes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
And just kind of get a little clarification. So you mentioned that the third, the thirty-one million in phase one B is for the additional hundred and ninety ERUs. Is that all we're getting out of it, spending thirty-one million dollars?
No, no, there's, there's additional, um, there are reliability improvements uh that need to be made to continue to um meet permits and and provide. So, um, for example, the effluent pipeline um has experienced some breaks that, you know, that pipelines.
So, yeah, I know that there's some things that we have to do, no matter what. What I'm saying is, are are, are we only getting a hundred and ninety additional ERUs? Or are we getting more than that?
You're, well, that, there are five hundred and ninety that have already been approved.
Right.
And then there are, and then a hundred and ninety more um that have been conditionally approved once the city has demonstrated that.
Right, and so that's what I'm asking. For those hundred and ninety, we're gonna spend thirty-one million. I mean, we gotta do some of it anyways, but we're gonna spend thirty-one million and just get a hundred and ninety. We're not gonna get another two hundred over that after we do, after we spend thirty-one million, we're not gonna get a hundred and ninety plus two hundred more.
Well, unless we can demonstrate more.
Probably not.
Probably, I think you're right, probably not, but unless we can demonstrate more.
I, I may offer, Mayor, so and Dick, please let me know if this, I I asked ahead of this meeting to carve out just the cost of expanding the equalization basin, which is one of the major physical things we would do to unlock the one ninety. And Portia told me that was about three point five million for that. So a lot of this other stuff is stuff we'd have to do anyway.
That's true.
And that three point five is being funded through the ARPA grant, so, you know, ye- yes, we're spending money, but that was that not an impact to the rate payers on on that three point five million to get the additional hundred and ninety ERUs unlocked.
Yeah, so effectively, we're gonna pay almost sixty-two million to make our current facility compliant with what it should have been.
You could say that.
But not increasing its capacity at all. Well, that would include getting a hundred and ninety more.
Short-term future needs, yeah.
Yes.
And we require, you know, the collection system, we've gotten the worst ones. And maybe, maybe we get one or two more, but, you know, this, this is doing all of them and I can't imagine a lot of newer neighborhoods are as leaky as these older ones. Is is, is that's a necessary, you know, again, I'm just trying to like figure out how to reduce that middle short-term uh expenditures when it doesn't really get us that much.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, and Rob might have more information on this, but there, there are some, you know, there, there are some large repairs that are needed that were identified through some of the initial inspection. Um, there, there's some um reliability improvements for some of the pump stations um that that are needed to make sure that that the existing um customers have, you know, reliable service. Um, you know, with, if, you know, if power goes down or a pump goes out of service or something like that.
Those will all be needed even if you go to Gresham.
Yes, yes.
Ninety million you'll need no matter what for a long term.
Okay.
Oh, I'd like to make a point on that too, right, is even if we had all the money sitting on the pile in the middle floor, we're still, either one of these solutions is an eight to ten-year development curve. By the time you go through getting the right-of-way, getting the permits, getting the design done, getting the construction done and starting up. So we've got this interim period in here, and Heather mentioned it, I'm gonna reemphasize it. Consent decree requires us to stay in compliance. Or EPA could, DOJ could come back in and start taking away ERUs again, right? If we continue to have failure. So part of this investment in the plant today is to bridge this period of time until we can get a more permanent solution in place. So it's not, I'm with you, right? We don't want to invest money we don't have in something we're not gonna use, but at the same time, we can't not repair what we have because we're gonna fall right back into the trap again. We don't continue to make some limited smart investments to extend the life of our existing asset. That eight to ten-year period is going to take any one of these options to materialize.
Take it. Well, I think it's for our future slide, all right.
How many basins are we required to rehab as part of the uh consent decree, Rob?
Uh, we, the city's already done. Yeah, and and the results show from the reduction of P's. Now, there's still work outside of those basins that need to be done and are required by the consent decree and AJ and the city are are active and working on those.
Excellent.
Great.
All right. So, uh, so then the remainder, yeah, but, oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go back, yeah.
Yeah, ju- just for a second. Yeah, so so the remainder, just to kind of close this one out, uh, the remainder, you know, the the additional future costs that are associated with that MBR improvement are the hundred and sixty-six million dollars. That in includes a a ten percent management reserve um to make sure that the city has the capacity to handle uh any unanticipated conditions that might arise. Um, and that brings the total program cost to two hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. Okay.
And worked into theirs for uh anticipated legal costs and, you know, dealing with all the Sandy River, the federal government requirements and just, I mean, that's all worked into that. Cause I just feel like there's this huge regulatory question mark in the middle of that slide that's missing uh that comes with a cost, right?
Yeah, so my understanding, and jump in if I have this incorrect, all the permitting costs are reflected in this. You know, we don't have, to my understanding, you know, a separate like legal line item with the anticipation of using Josh and BEH for thousands of hours. I mean, that's gonna be, part of that's the cost of doing business that's built into our normal budget for legal expenses, but there certainly would be an increase in in legal fees that would need to be.
But when you talk program costs, though, right, like a couple of years ago, part of our program costs were paying for temperature uh studies along the Sandy River to find out exactly how cold or warm it was. What a future unantic- I mean, unanticipated costs or unanticipated costs, but like with that kind of pro, you know, I mean, that's something that I would want to try to anticipate the best we could into a program like this, right? Uh, so we're, we're anticipating, those are all wrapped into there. I guess what I probably figure out, what is, what's the X factor in this slide, right? Like, what, what are we not asking or thinking of that could be an additional cost, what you're presenting in front of us today?
I think the X factor is probably not cost as much as schedule. That's the one thing that we can't.
Yeah.
We can't force DEQ into, you will issue us a permit by this date, right? That's gonna be a process that works through public involvement, public engagement and building consensus and.
And time is money, both shortening and lengthening, right?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But Mayor, to your point, you know, that's why we've got that ten percent management reserve, so that if there is an extra study that DEQ says, nope, you've got to do one more temperature gauge or you gotta do whatever else, and that's why we have a a little bit of cushion in the overall program budget to make sure that we aren't coming back and saying, hey, we need another three million dollars added to this project now from this other scope of work. We've got it reflected on the front end.
Are these twenty twenty-four costs?
Okay, yeah.
Then you're saying that we're not gonna do this, oh, the largest portion of it for two, for eight to ten years. So what's the cost, I mean?
Yeah, so that there, there is escalation built into this based on the anticipated construction uh, you know, future construction year.
Yep.
Cool.
All right.
So it's twenty twenty-four cost, but it's already escalated based off.
Well, so, yeah, so the, the wastewater treatment plant improvements and the Sandy River pump station costs are in twenty twenty-four dollars. And then the next line has um construction management uh.
All right.
All right, so, so this is what the preliminary uh alternative looks like for sending flow uh to the Gresham Treatment Plant. So this is, this is an initial uh force main alignment from the existing treatment plant to the Gresham Facility. Um, so there would be a large pump station at the Yarol Road Treatment Plant. And fourteen miles of uh force main that that fortunately. And fourteen miles of uh force main that that fortunately um look like they could be largely in public right-of-way. Um, so that that helps uh from a schedule standpoint, um, and a bit from a constructability standpoint, there there's. You know, the this alignment in in developing the cost estimate, and the team looked at, you know, where where this alignment might need to, you know, cross railroads. And, you know, streams and, you know, major thoroughfares and things like that, so so those kinds of considerations are are factored into this cost. And we've also assumed that that this new pipeline would go directly to the Gresham Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um, obviously, Gresham's collection system extends considerably farther south. Um, so there is the potential that Sandy's flow could enter Gresham's collection system at a different point. Um, there there's the system currently doesn't have capacity for that, so some improvements would be needed, um, but. The city of Gresham also needs to make some improvements in their collection system, so if there were a more cost-effective way to get that flow. Um, through Gresham's system to the wastewater treatment plant, that's something that could be looked at, but uh to be conservative at this point, we've assumed. That the flow would be pumped all the way to the Gresham Wastewater Treatment Plant.
And so if we are going the whole way through Gresham, I assume that's not just gonna be our wastewater flowing through there, they're gonna. Are they gonna tap into our pipe?
Um, there, that could be a potential, we haven't assumed that at this point, these these costs are based on just, you know. Sizing a system for what Sandy would need, um, and Sandy constructing the pipeline. Um, but if there were, if there were opportunities to share capacity and that was beneficial to both communities. Um, and that helped to make it more cost-effective.
Since I'm just, now my brain's on it, so I should probably wait, but, you know, guys, as I, I'm kind of saying this, that the units of council is. Uh, considering this path forward, and and what that is, is where pipes go, development goes, right? Where infrastructure goes, development goes, and so, you know, you wanna be looking at your UGB, you wanna be looking at what kind of construction is gonna be happening. Along Highway twenty-six in Gresham, what was that green corridor agreement, what is the current status of that? Not to open up a box of worms, that's kind of what we're opening up here by doing this, um, and then like reimbursement districts.
Correct.
Right, so now if that's where, and and it is, I sent an email to Tyler, it sounds like they investigated it, but I would still keep asking questions. And that is what boring looks like, and going that way just because there's so much development that way. And what it what appeals to me about this is ongoing where the construction's gonna go, I don't love the. I want you to look at the Gresham Sandy stuff, just because I love the green space there to a certain degree, right, so you gotta look at that, but. Where you're looking at where that construction and where that future development's gonna go in a reimbursement district, those are future dollars to help offset. You know, our costs, and I think there does need to be a little bit of a recognition in this plan that you are spurring development a little bit with it. Because you are obviously taking on some costs in infrastructure that others would have to take on themselves by building out in this area. You know, now that the pipe is set.
Well, I I, yes and no, I mean, I think the key message that I heard is that this pipe as. As engineered right now meets Sandy's needs.
Sure.
And meaning Sandy in our twenty forty plan, Sandy, which would include some of the small, you know, the UGB around us, but. If somebody at Boring or some area outside of that wants to tie in, there's not capacity in it for that, so we would. That's something we we're gonna wanna think about at construction. Do we overbuild so that we can do what you're talking about?
But you have sandy growth.
Do we wanna size that pipeline a little bigger so that we can tap in future dollars and. And help offset, you know, ten, twenty years down the road, this this will be, you know. It's hard to think of that area growing out five years from now, but forty years from now, you know, yeah.
Alright, sorry, and I digress.
Yeah, that's your excellent point. Alright, so there are there are some uh important advantages to think about on along um. That pertain to this regional alternative, and and we've touched on some of them already in in this discussion that we're having, um, so, you know. While the total costs are comparable, the the regional option uh does have some flexibility uh with respect to costs. Uh, both in terms of negotiating the system development charge, so the, you know, the the alternative costs include, you know, the building the pump station and pipeline. And the cost of buying into capacity at at the existing Sandy plant, um, so what that value is is something that uh would be negotiated. Uh, with Sandy in terms of both the value, the, you know, the the amount, um, and the payment terms, um, so payment over time is something that. That could be an option here that that, you know, contractors don't like that for infrastructure, but there's a little bit more flexibility when we're talking about an SDC. Uh, and and other potential regional opportunities, you know, like bringing in uh other partners like Boring. Um, the second option is that this avoids the need for the the um uncertain and potentially lengthy. Outfall permitting, you know, this this is all work that we um understand really well, we understand, you know, the permits required to. To do this type of construction and and that's um, there there's very, uh, the uncertainty is very low uh for that compared to uh the Sandy River downfall.
So just to clarify, we wouldn't need, would we still need a DEQ permit, or would we fall under Gresham's discharge permit?
You, it that, it would, you would fall under Gresham's discharge permit, so the city of Sandy would would no longer need to hold a permit. Uh, Gresham would hold that permit and and Gresham's existing, uh, their their permitted capacity right now has. Uh, they they have uh capacity for Sandy, you know, now and and in twenty forty.
So I mean, that's kind of like you said, a big time chunk of.
Yeah.
Unknown definition and getting rid of that can get things moving a lot faster.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know it's kind of soft pedal with that uncertain public process, but let's not forget. How many people and friends we made down there in the Rosson Lake area when we suggested the outfit in the first place, you know, so. That would be a big win for them. And everybody else. They don't think about that.
Um, the this alternative has a relatively low environmental impact compared to some of the other discharge options. You know, obviously, the Columbia River is, you know, it's a large water body, it has tremendous assimilative capacity, so, you know, the impact of Sandy's effluents is relatively small. Um, and the the potential impact of future uh regulations in terms of driving uh future permit limits. You know, that that impact in the Columbia River is gonna be smaller than it is on on the Sandy or or certainly on Tigo Creek. Um, and then finally, it it provides the greatest certainty in terms of long-term reliability, it's it's a large facility that is already a tri- a regional. Treatment provider um that that has capacity available, so. There's certainty in in that as a long-term strategy. Alright, um, and uh the city has had some initial regional treatment discussions to make sure that that this is a viable. Alternative um from Gresham's perspective, uh, those alternative or those discussions have been very positive. Um, so Gresham is is open and is interested in um exploring a regional solution. Um, like I said, they they are already already a regional treatment provider, so there are, they provide wholesale wastewater treatment. Service for Wood Village and for Fairview, um, so there there is uh precedent or, you know. Existing frameworks in place in terms of both the legal agreements and uh the financial terms uh of that service, so that provides um some good background information. And there's a high probability that that the SDC would be lower than what was used in the Facility Plan Amendment, so. Um, just to be conservative again, the Facility Plan Amendment used the full SDC um in the initial investigation of this alternative. Um, that, you know, that's a, that's the SDC that they would charge any customer, it's it's not a a rate for a wholesale customer. That doesn't require uh collection system service, um, so we can, if we go to the next slide, um, we've done some. Some initial uh looks at at what that range of SDC might be, so. Um, again, this has the same format as the costs that we looked at for the MBR alternative, so the. The thirty-one million spent and the thirty-one millions yet to be incurred are the same, um, and then we get to the. The phase two costs for the Gresham alternative, uh, the pump station and pipeline cost is a little over a million dollars. Um, again, there's some construction management and and escalation in there, and then the system development charge, um, the high end of that is fifty-nine million dollars. Which which puts this total uh slightly higher than the MBR alternative, but the low end of that using the Fairview and Wood. Village, the most recent Fairview and Wood Village agreements um as a model, would put the SDC at something more like twenty-five million dollars. So that brings the cost of that alternative um somewhere in the range of a hundred and forty-nine to a hundred and eighty-three million. Um, for total program cost of two hundred and eleven to two hundred and forty-five million.
So that's the wholesale charges that you were talking about, that uh Wood Village has in place already with Gresham, but.
Yeah.
They would line up on that line.
Yeah, 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 and that's, you know, that that's provided for informational purposes, you know, it would, you know, part of determining this. The SDC would be looking at, you know, what the impact is of Sandy's wastewater going to the Gresham plant and and confirming the cost of service. For Sandy, um, so it, you know, twenty-five, it might not be exactly twenty-five million, but that provides some some bookends, you know, based on. The existing information uh that we have for for wholesale service and for kind of retail service.
This is our buy-in rate, there's still a month to month charges that we pay on top of that, right?
Yeah.
Which you can factor it somewhere else.
On which, that at least to my next question, which I'm thinking about, because it's about, if they both cost the same. What is the the least expensive in the long term for the residents? Because that's what the argument is, is how to get that rate down.
Right.
And I know there's no way to keep the rate down from current cost expenditure for upgrade, but we are talking not five years out, we're talking twenty-five years out.
Yeah.
So if we build the pipe, does that mean our capacity is unlimited and rates won't go up anymore? Unless the SDC goes up from our negotiations with Gresham per our contract, which we defined the terms on. Versus doing something ourselves and then having to keep worrying about expansion and growth. Um, and do you have a recommended opinion on that for us?
Yeah, yeah, so so the 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 O and M costs um. For for treatment at Gresham would be comparable to or or less than um the city staying independent. Um, and as the Gresham facility expands, you know, there there's the, there's economies of scale, you know, of having a, you know. A ten percent stake in in a large facility like that, so, you know, while there might be costing, you know, if if there are new. Regulations for PFOS that everybody has to comply with, you know, there there would be, you know, there would be improvements down the road. Um, that all of the customers of any facility would be subject to, but but the relative cost of. Um, providing, you know, he providing additional capacity or additional uh O and M, you know, incurring additional O and M charges to deal with those. Um, the the economies of scale at the Gresham plant would make that, you know, relatively more affordable compared with. Um, having to manage those independently at the the Yar Road facility.
Also, it feels like you start to become too big to fail too, right? Like, you know, they're not gonna let that facility go down. Right.
A question on the SDCs, because I always think of the SDCs as something for new construction, and so. Well, but but since we're kind of new to Gresham, even though my house is, you know, sixty years old.
Yeah.
Whatever, that that would mean, would those SDCs represent all us existing customers hooking up?
Yeah.
Or just our new ones, or just new a additional growth?
It the, so the the SDC would represent whatever, whatever portion of capacity. Sandy wants to basically purchase at Gresham's plant, so that's another place where there might be some flexibility, it could be the number of customers that. You know, that that you'll be seeing serving.
Cause we're talking, cause you're, we've been talking SDCs in a completely different vein than yours, so. In this context, the SDC is one customer with us, so it's our SDC from the city to buy into that. Very comparable to a new house buying into our city's system, right, so just to, there's no. You're buying, as you said, into a percentage of the plant, and this is your buy-in, they've already pre-built the plant, they've got cost in there. Right. This would be under that kind of.
Right, but we're also paying the cost of the construction of the whole line.
Well, but the line we own at this point, unless we enter into some partnership with them, and then we can split the cost with them.
It's just the um their infrastructure, once we get that stuff to them.
Right, you're buying into the plant.
And then and then my second question is like when we have, so now currently, you know, we have uh wastewater SDCs and presumably, you know, for those to increase them and all, but. In the future, if we were to Gresham, then would our wastewater SDCs, where would those go? Would they go to Gresham, would they come to us, or?
They'd be reimbursable.
They could ask, I mean, we would charge new development in Sandy and SDC just like we do now for buying into the city's collection system. Doesn't matter where that collection system goes, it's it's our SDCs and the capital costs that we've shelled out to to build that infrastructure to get to. A treatment plant, whether it's our treatment plant or something else.
Factor to when we do our own SDC calculations, this would be the reimbursement portion, because we will have, you know, twenty years ago, we will prepay this. And we'll have excess capacity and then the reimbursable portion would buy it.
Alright.
Alright, good.
Oh, real quick, the other thing I like about the Gresham thing is, is when you go to the legislature to ask for money, wastewater's their problem. Like, modern, I mean, we're a customer, we bought and they may ask us to put our logo on a letter, right, and to go and like advocate for it. But it's no longer like our sole item that we have to like use all of our chips for. And it just allows our city to break off of this a little bit and start trying to get nimble on some other. More more key projects.
If I can piggyback off of that real quick, mayor, you know, I think that's uh a great point, one of the uh. We've had several conversations, I've had several conversations with. Uh, you know, a handful of people at the state level, and a regional treatment option is definitely a more palatable. Path forward from their perspective, because it is this partnership with two different counties, it's now four cities, it's hundreds of thousands of people, not. Just thirteen thousand people, and so there's certainly a, um, I think a a larger deal of interest. In supporting a project that is a regional solution and not just this micro issue. It's very not micro for us here, but at the state level, it's a pretty.
And when you're asking for money, you guys, think about how much easier the second slide was to comprehend than the first for us. So like, if you're a state legislator or you're the chair of the Ways and Means or whatever, it, where we have a problem, we're building a pipe to a regional solution. We're hooking in, we're done, right?
Small communities and subjects.
Right, as opposed to. The first slide. It it it's just, it it it's a lot larger of a story to tell.
We didn't have to mention three basin at all.
That is one of the issues with the option of trying to go to Boring and then down to West there. Is that, you know, you're still, at the end of the day, you're still in the flakamas.
Yeah.
And they don't, there's a lot of issues that I've heard, you know, between in the different little sections, you know, Damascus and all that, and so they would. Kind of a nightmare to try to figure out what all's needed, I mean, they need to figure something out, but. They don't necessarily wanna take that problem, if we can just stay.
If they wanna buy in a big enough chunk of the pipeline, we can maybe help.
Well, you know, for the for the Gresham one, I feel like, you know, we do need to be looking at, you know, and, you know, I I don't know pipe diameters at all, but, you know, if like. Our plan is a sixteen inch and we can get, you know, uh, a whole lot more money or buy-in and and pay off. You know, people helping us pay for it to get a twenty-four inch, you know, most of the cost is in, not in the pipe itself, it's in that. All the lead-up to it, so I'd like to try to.
Pipe gets expensive, pipe gets exponentially more expensive.
Right, but if, you know, if that comes with money, because you're hooking more people up.
If we were solving a west problem and pulled in all that population, as far as the legislature asks. You know, maybe.
There's a lot of stuff you learn about affluent, the direction it goes, and what that means for policy.
Downhill?
Yeah. Well, you could try to go uphill, but it's expensive, buddy.
Alright, so so in terms of recommendations for the Facility Plan Amendment, uh, we we are recommending that. That the Facility Plan Amendment retain uh two alternatives, um, because nothing is is certain at this point, uh, the. The regional alternative is is the preferred alternative, um, that we're we're recommending uh the city further develop. Um, but the Sandy River alternative would be retained as a secondary option if if for some reason. Um, there was an issue with the regional alternative, um, and that wasn't uh, wasn't able to um. To proceed forward um to a a full complete solution. Um, so that's the recommendation in the Facility Plan Amendment, um, in the in the near term. Um, like we said, there are minor upgrades that are needed uh to the existing treatment plant. Um, the city also needs to proceed with the permit renewal, the DEQ is currently drafting uh a permit. And uh we would work with DEQ um to negotiate terms in that permit as a bridging strategy to allow the city to. Continue to uh meet permit limits uh while you're. While you're implementing this new solution without having to have significant upgrades at the existing treatment plant. We need to further examine the conveyance alternatives and the the potential for shared interceptors to see if there's some. Opportunity to to further reduce costs and partner with Gresham and then also pursue funding assistance. Wherever possible.
Can I ask? Relative to the permit. We have two permits that we're proceeding right now, the Tickle Creek and Sandy. At what point do we pause the Sandy River?
Yeah, so so DEQ has said that that they can. They can renew the existing permit with just the Tickle Creek downfall without adding. The Sandy River downfall, or they can proceed with the the full permit application, including the Sandy River downfall. But were you gonna say, okay. Yeah, so so that's something that it needs to be determined, you know. Relatively soon, I would say probably within the next six months, you know, we we would want to let DEQ know. What the preferred option is, because we do want to be talking with them about those. Potential bridging strategies and and those are, you know. The bridging strategies are needed, whether you're going to the Sandy River or Gresham, just because of the timeframe for construction. But they can, they can proceed more quickly with the permit renewal if if the Sandy River downfall is not part of a new permit.
So let me ask the question differently. Do we know what we have to do in order to make that decision and permanently commit to one alternative over the other?
I can jump in with one. The city aggressions ask that the city of Sandy help with. Some on or some new efforts to reevaluate their treatment plant and what the addition of Sandy's flows would do to their treatment plants. So redoing their facility plan or up doing an amendment to their facility plan. That takes around nine months. And so they put a price tag on that. They said the last time was around four hundred thousand. Plus, they want to look at the collection system as well as Heather had mentioned. So that work needs to be done before I think the city would say. Okay, we can take the Sandy River downfall off the table completely and tell DEQ that until that happens. There's always a wild card aggression coming in and saying, oh, well, it's not sixty million, it's actually a hundred million because of all of the upgrades we need at our treatment. And I don't think Sandy wants to prove yourself.
So we, so we're at least a year out. So we need to continue the Sandy River downfall for at least another year, probably.
Yeah, I think parallel tracks makes sense because then there's money, yeah, without going full blast.
Sure, drag our feet a little, but.
And we've been dragging our feet a little on the Sandy River option over the last several months, because we were trying to figure out. Is there a clear alternative that just makes sense and solves all of our issues? And we don't have. The the golden egg, so to speak, that just sort of fell in our lap, but we do have this, you know, Gresham alternative that is looking more and more viable than. What we do know about future treatment needs and and capacity issues.
Thank you.
Yes, what I'm concerned about is that. You know, we're getting, we're spending the thirty-two million dollars to get what we need to get done. And that gets us a hundred and ninety, but then I'm hearing, you know, eight to ten years before. Yes, we have a hundred and ninety for the next eight to ten years.
Yep.
And that's. I I I just, you know, I I don't know much about this, but it just seems like if we're just going down the existing road right of ways. And we don't need a a permit and and it's not controversial, I guess, you know, that just seems a little.
Could it be faster as I would?
Yeah, just like, you know, how about five years? I mean, that seems more reasonable than. I mean, I understand this things take time and right away and stuff like that, but I guess that does concern me if. You're talking about, you know, eight to ten years of. You know, less than two hundred year use. And and that's where, you know, that bridge strategy stuff, I, you know, I would be pushing as hard as I could on that because. You know, ultimately, you know, if if. You know, we should be able to kind of, you know, have, you know, a modest increase or something like that. And, you know, we need to get rid of those. Date things and make it weather related as far as the October to May thing. And we need to, you know, possibly, you know. If if we're discharging, you know, treated clean, fairly clean water than that ten to one dilution rule should, you know. Increasing the flow in Tickle Creek with, you know, clean water seems like. You know, good for the fish. So, you know, I mean, it's a different thing if it's, you know, not really clean, but, you know. So kind of just pushing back on those kind of things so that we do have the ability to not be in this. You know, have so many limits placed on us again with the fact that we're also spending, you know. Bazillion dollars, you know, just huge amounts of money to get get out of this.
Right.
So a little good faith. Both ways would really, I'd be pushing for as much. Additional ERUs that we can, you know, fit in there because a hundred and ninety for eight to ten years and. You know, when we're spending this much money is really. Not that.
Yeah.
Attractive to me.
You know, I think DEQ and EPA are going to want to see a pattern of compliance before they give us. Much more than the hundred and ninety, but if we can have a conversation with them with here's our preferred alternative, here's the next steps we're taking, we haven't had a violation in. Eighteen months, you know, making up a number here, but I think if we can continue to show that we are doing all the right things and we have this plan and it's getting us. To the permanent solution, they might be willing to play ball much more than they have in the past because. You know, we're we're showing and we're spending and we're we're doing all the right things. It's hard to ask for more when we have, when we don't have a. A plan yet, so to speak, right?
But, you know, I mean, when a violate, when something's a violation on October twenty-eighth, under the same conditions. That it's not a violation under November second as far as rainfall, stream flow and all that, that's just red tape. That's not.
Hundred percent.
Any impact to anything.
Yeah.
So those are the kind of, you know, playing games type violations that really aren't a violation. We need to kind of. Push as hard as we can on that.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like this is going to be back in front of councilmen. At a regular meeting to adopt and report.
Well, do you want, we've got a couple more slides if we can run through.
All right.
Key messages and then the the takeaways or the considerations that we need from the council.
This is key messages for us to utilize, right?
Yeah, and actually, I believe, I mean. We've actually kind of gone through them, honestly, in the course of this conversation, I was kind of making note of that as we were speaking.
No, there's one that we missed that's real important.
Which one were you thinking about?
Sixteen years, we did not mention the specific number of years.
Ah, three. Thank you for that. So. Yeah, I think that the project scene now is in a place to say pretty definitively. And and maybe weren't before, but is now comfortable saying that. You know, the option of remaining on Tickle Creek over the long term. Is just really not a viable solution, even if the three basin rule were to be revised. The dilution ratio requirements, which are a separate issue. Would make it so that we would. We would by twenty forty, sixteen years from now, we would not be able to comply. And so you'd still be. Paying off the cost of construction on something. At that point and be out of the ability to effectively use it. So it just doesn't seem to be a viable solution. And we're comfortable saying that pretty bluntly at this point.
Let me just clarify, is remaining on Tickle Creek the short-term step that we need to do, or that's a different alternative of?
I I'm talking about the idea that was discussed previously of what what if we could just improve the plants? Get some regulatory, you know, relaxation.
Spending more than the thirty-one million.
Correct, correct.
That's, I just want to make sure.
Basically, we gotta get out of Tickle Creek.
Oh, I know that, but I just wanted to make sure.
We we had that as an option before, they're taking it off the table. The the other bullet that you want to cover is the second one on the next page too. I think that's real important.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
So. And this is a message that we're going to be projecting more and more often. So. Do you want to do this, Tyler? Well, you know, you get you get steeped in these things. The Sandy is subject to the more stringent wastewater regulations than almost any other city in Oregon. It's like counted on one hand. Compliance with the three base rule raises the cost of what we need to do by depending on how you calculate this, at least sixty million dollars. And the idea that a town of thirteen thousand people and change. Should have to bear that full cost for the benefit of three hundred thousand people downstream. Just does not seem to me to be a fair proposition. So that's what we're going to be saying publicly, that's what we'll be saying down in Salem, I see daily degrees here in the audience. Yeah, and that's that's our position. So just wanted to take that opportunity to say that out loud. Anything you'd like to add to that, Tyler?
No, I mean, we've started using that message, gosh, when was that, Nellie? Two weeks ago? The week before Thanksgiving, last week kind of throws me off. But we've started, you know, raising that point that hasn't been. The the thirteen thousand paying for the benefit of three hundred thousand hasn't really been something that we put into just black and white terms like that. And so. You know, I don't know how much it sunk in, but it certainly, I think, is a a point that needs to be driven home more and more and. Is easy to conceptualize as the person receiving the information, like, well, you have this really small population paying for the benefit of this really large population. There isn't an equity there. There is an imbalance there that someone needs to help us address.
So obviously, we're going to be doing everything we can to secure outside funding, as we've discussed. We are certainly still going to. Carry our own financing burden that is going to mean that we, you know, we have a rate schedule that includes increases, so we need to. Acknowledge that Tyler's spoken in the past about the coverage requirements of of that financing and the fact that they need to see. Sufficient revenue coming in to make those repayments. Council has also discussed raising SDCs to ensure that. The cost of improvements is appropriately spread out among all stakeholders. So Mayor and and Council, these are the four things in staff board that we were. Wanted to make sure that you're comfortable with staff moving for moving forward on. We'd like to conduct some public outreach. On these options here in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, that's what do we think? That's kind of like open house, town hall things. We were asking for your permission to move forward, speaking with City of Gresham on this regional treatment alternative. We would like your approval to begin conceptual design of a pipeline. To Gresham. And also just for your endorsement for us to continue moving moving forward, especially in the new legislative session. To pursue funding for this regional treatment alternative. So with with that, Mayor, I'll send it back to you.
We're all nodding at that, the staff. All right, cool. All right. Great, thank you.
So when will we adopt mine after we get all the data from Gresham? Are we going to adopt it before amendment? Because you didn't address that.
That's a great question.
Or required by December, right?
We only had to submit a draft.
Draft, that's what I'm saying.
So we've submitted the draft to. Or in accordance with the consent decree, we've requested an extension. Because it's not adopted yet. Josh, is that a six-month extension that we requested? I can't remember now.
Requested a year.
We have.
Three years, okay. Right.
Did they give it to us?
The answer is, what what's the city is able to choose one option, which based on Rob's feedback is probably nine months to a year from now. That's when you can adopt a plan, if there's an option and then and finalize.
Okay.
That timeline also winds up. Nicely with the reevaluation of the three basin rule, not that that's going to provide us. A long-term benefit, but that will provide us potentially flexibility over the next several years while we're building the permanent solution. So we kind of have. A lot of different things running in tandem right now that do sort of potentially align. Late summer, early fall with giving us a better. Understanding of what next steps look like and then the potential to adopt a plan and forward that one.
Then can we publish the draft plan in the same spot as the as the current adopted plan so that we have both of them there since it's going to be such a long time?
And so it's a public document now, I don't see.
Right.
Why not? Yeah.
Right.
And then, of course, you know, if if you're reading every word of that facility plan amendment, you have any comments, feedback, suggestions, questions, feel free to send us to staff. We will work on getting answers and and respond to any concerns or questions that you have.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, all the work on this, and we'll go ahead and adjourn our work session and try to get back in here by seven ten to start our city council meeting. Thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and get going here. I will call our city council meeting to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to your republic for which it stands, one nation, united out, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right, well, thank you, everybody. I will start with the review of tonight's agenda. I will call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then get into public comment. We do have one that was submitted from. Pastor Mayor Malone, so I'll call you up when it's time. We have no response to the previous meeting's minutes. Under the consent agenda for tonight, we have the city council minutes for our November eighteenth meeting. The planning commission appointments as well as resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, which is a temporary exception to the city manager signing authority. To administer on-call construction contracts. Under resolutions tonight, we have a public hearing, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five to amend the master fee schedule for utility fees. Reminder on these public hearings, if you want to testify for those, wait for that time to do so. We'll have another public hearing, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-four, which is the extension of the existing moratorium on development. Under ordinances, we have a public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-three. Which will be looking at chapters one point one six and one point one eight of the municipal code. Then we'll end the evening with a report from our city manager as well as our committee and council reports. With that, Jeff, would you like to call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Yes, Councilman.
Present.
Councilman Smallwood.
Here.
Councilman Sheldon. Councilman Walker.
Yeah.
Councilman Hanley.
Yeah.
Councilman Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Polian.
Present. Thank you for that, Jeff. With that, are there any proposed changes for tonight's agenda? Hearing that, we'll go ahead and move ahead to public comment. We have Pastor Malone, Mayor Linda Malone. You have three minutes. Please remember to state your name and address for the record.
Linda Malone, one seven seven four zero Bluff Road. And I just wanted to get up and and congratulate the council on the recent election and. How amicable it was and that it will create a historical first for the city of Sandy. In nineteen nineteen, there were three women on the council. Two of which were standing in for husbands who were away at war, serving in battle or whatever. But before the women had the vote. Nationally, we had three women on our city council. We had three women again during my term with all gun laws. But in January, when the new members are sworn in, there will be four women serving on the city council. Which is is a first in the. Since nineteen eleven. For the city of Sandy, and I think that's very progressive and I wanted to make note of it. Hopefully, it's a is a good sign for the future. But anyway, that's all I had to say. I thought it was interesting tidbit from history.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Absolutely. With that, well, we will move ahead to our consent agenda. Which has our city council meeting minutes from November eighteenth, our planning commission appointments as well as resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, which is the temporary exception. Add to the city manager signing authority to administer on-call construction contracts. We're open for discussion or a motion to adopt.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the consent agenda.
I wanted to say one comment, I just want to have a shout out to the planning commission appointees. And they are Art O'Leary, Brandon Zawaski, Linda Malone, and Jan Lee are the four selected. There were several other applicants and I hope that they are able to kind of become engaged in city. Politics and and city activities because they were all very interested and engaging. And I hope that they become more involved with the city. So thank you for every everybody to for applying. Thank you very much to the four selected. We look forward to working with you.
I'll second it.
Absolutely. There's a motion by Councilman Sheldon and a second by Councilman Hockenson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nays. Motion carries. And again, thank you for the service to those stepping up for a planning commission. With that, let's move ahead to resolutions. I will open a public hearing ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five at seven seventeen P M. Sir, any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest? Very now, I'll move ahead to the staff report, Tyler.
Thank you, Mayor. So, council will recall that at the last meeting, we had a work session regarding proposed utility rate increases for. Are effective with the January billing cycle. Those utility increases are proposed for. Water, wastewater and stormwater funds. Thank you, Jeff. I'm not going to, I hadn't planned on going through the whole presentation again that FCS had prepared, but we can certainly. Jump to two slides that were incorrect, the work session that I'd like to highlight this evening, just to make sure you have updated. And correct information in front of you, Jeff, if you can. I don't remember the number, but it's the comparison slides with other cities with the corrected consumption rates. I think it's one more. So the first one here is water. Previously, this showed ten CCF as the average consumption. This slide has been. Corrected to reflect our city average of seven. This slide has been corrected to reflect our city average of seven CCF. It doesn't really change where we fall on the scale as far as where the city, where the city of Sandy lands, but the numbers that are shown here reflect the actual average residential customer. And so currently, we're at fifty seven, fifty eight on average per month. And the proposed increase would be going up to seventy eight twenty eight. And then if you can jump a couple more slides ahead.
And it kind of like getting Nellie, this is, this is a, this is a slide to show, I think, elected leaders and stuff for sure, where we, where we land.
We can certainly pass this along to Nellie, so she has it in her.
Well, when people ask, what have you done? What, what, what are your citizens going against? Guess what? We just overtook Portland.
Yep.
Wastewater comparison.
This one?
One more.
One more.
One more. One more. There we go. Sorry.
And then the comparison here, again, updating this to reflect the average consumption of seven CCF. So again, towards the top here with the comparable cities that we're, that we're looking at. The staff report that you have before you this evening goes into quite a bit more detail than the one that you received two weeks ago, really trying to articulate more about the specific projects that we're facing and the costs associated with those projects. And so just, you know, to give a brief overview, on the water side of things, we've got two significant infrastructure projects before us right now. We've got the Alder Creek Treatment Plant reinvestment there to increase redundancy and resiliency at that plant to also make sure that we can, you know, get as much water out of the creek as our water rights allow us to. And so the overall project cost at Alder Creek is estimated to be about twenty one point nine million. It's also important to note that based on the Water Master Plan figures, our maximum demand in twenty fifty is about four point two million gallons per day. And the water that we can reliably pull out of Alder Creek is substantially less than that, right? So Alder Creek, while it provides a great deal of water for us, it is fantastic water. It's not enough to meet our demand. And so that sort of, you know, leads us into the secondary project that we have on the water side of things, which is building this pipeline to the Portland Water Grows Bull Run filtration facility. And that is so that we have adequate water supply in our peak demand months to make sure that all of our residents, both now and in the future, have a reliable water source and we don't have curtailment issues or other issues that can be caused by wildfire or drought or something else that impacts Alder Creek. And the pipeline to Portland projects estimated about forty two point six million right now. Both of these projects will be completed mid to late twenty twenty seven. And so we're really in the heavy stretch of capital investment on the water side right now. We've done a couple pretty hefty rate increases in the past two years. And this is the last of the large rate increases that are being proposed, another thirty six percent right now. In the presentation, as well as in the staff report, there is a schedule of proposed rate increases going into the future. We're not asking you to adopt any of those future rate increases this evening. Just wanted to include that in the packet for transparency purposes for the public and for you all to know kind of where we're sitting at right now with the rate models and what that looks like going forward. So again, that's a thirty six percent increase on the water side going into effect with the bills that are received in January. On the wastewater side, we are proposing a sixteen percent rate increase there. You just had a very lengthy conversation about around the facility plan amendment and kind of have some project costs to wrap your head around, I'm sure, but the rate model has, you know, two hundred million dollars of infrastructure projects built into it, which is essentially the maximum affordable amount that on paper, our residents can afford. Now granted, that is a very large utility bill, not saying that that's a easy or, or, you know, affordable rate from the rate payer perspective, but that's what's in the rate model currently. And that's what we're using as a baseline to figure out what we can afford, what our gap is and what we need to be going after, you know, in the future with state and federal dollars. But essentially, you know, we've got two options in front of us, the sanding for outfall or building a regional treatment solution. Both of those are over two hundred million dollars. And so to stay on track with the proposed capital expenditures, to be in compliance with the consent decree, as well as, you know, growth and customer base and everything else, we're looking at a need of a sixteen percent increase this year to make sure that we can continue to show the debt coverage requirements are satisfied for all of our loan agreements and make sure that we have the capital and cash on hand so that we can pay for these upgrades and then seek reimbursement through our loan programs. You know, we've been very fortunate in getting a lot of low interest and favorable term loans from both the state and through WIFTIA. But the unfortunate side of those is that they're reimbursement based, which means we need to have the cash on hand to pay for those upgrades and then seek reimbursement on a monthly or quarterly basis to replenish our, our cash reserves. And so there is a little bit of a, you know, a tug of war going on between needing cash on hand, even though we have loans secured. It's not twenty million dollars that gets deposited into our account. We need to have some cash on hands so we can pay for those investments and improvements and then get the reimbursement from the applicable lending agency. And then moving on to the stormwater side of things. Currently, the stormwater utility rate is eight dollars per month. We're proposing a two dollar increase to make that ten dollars per month. And that is so, you know, we can continue to plan and construct and effectively maintain the stormwater facilities. Stormwater fund has historically been underfunded. We don't have a stormwater master plan. We don't have a stormwater SDC. And so really, the only way to maintain the stormwater facilities is through the rates that are collected each month on the utility bill. We do have plans on working on getting a stormwater master plan developed and adopted in the future. Obviously, water and wastewater immediate needs took priority over the stormwater plan during this biennium. But next biennium, we really intend to get the stormwater master plan sort of kicked off and then have a basis for, you know, any future rate increases or just a long-term strategic management of stormwater facilities going forward. But in the meantime, this two dollar per month increase will assist in generating the revenue that we need to continue to maintain the stormwater system and prevent issues like the sinkhole that we had near Tupper Park a year and a half ago with aged infrastructure that had, you know, wasn't maintained and needed an immediate improvement without having cash on hand and having to do it an interfund loan from a different fund to make sure that there was, you know, the ability to pay for those immediate improvements that needed to be made to rectify that issue. You know, I guess the last thing I would point out, all three of these proposed rate increases were proposed in the budget process in early twenty twenty three. We had originally planned on bringing these, you know, sort of in line with what we'd done in the past in the summer months. But we spent the summer updating the rate models, making sure we had updated project costs and relevant and reliable information to make sure the rate model was as accurate as possible. That didn't generate the news that I was hoping for. I was hoping that, you know, by updating all those, we'd be able to get a little bit of a lower rate increase this year. That's not the case right now, but we continue to look at, you know, increasing SDCs as one example for mitigating future rate increases, as well as getting additional state and federal funds. But as the rate models lie right now and as the funding requirements are right now, the thirty six percent for water, sixteen percent for wastewater and two dollar increase on stormwater are what's needed to ensure that we can continue to meet all of our loan obligations, have the cash on hand that we need and stay on track for our capital projects. On a little bit of a side note, I had a question from Councilor Smallwood right before the meeting that I, you know, don't have a hundred percent answer, but I will give some color to it. And that question was, you know, what can we afford without rate increases? And I think the question was really geared towards, I interpreted it, or I did the analysis real quick on just the wastewater side.
Right now. Yeah, what are we paying for right now?
Yeah, you know, at the end of the day, the revenue that we're generating, last fiscal year, we got about four and a half million dollars in wastewater revenue. And to use wastewater as the example, if it's easiest for me to talk about. Our debt service on the existing loans that we've already drawn on is about one point three million dollars per year. We already executed the WIFTI loan. We haven't drawn substantial funds from that, but we have immediate improvements that are still needed. And so, you know, doing just the debt service obligations on the existing loans and the WIFTI loan, we're at about two point eight million a year just in debt service payments, not accounting for staff and regular operations and maintenance and things like that. So I guess, you know, to get to what I think the heart of your question was, failure to do a rate increase now would essentially mean we wouldn't be able to take out any more debt to do any further improvements. We would be limited to the debt that we've already issued and limited to constructing those improvements with the cash that we have.
And then, and then you added that, then what, about two point five, two and a half million dollars with the SDCs? For wastewater?
I.
The current ERUs.
Right. So with the current ERUs, I did not.
That have been taken in.
Yeah. So well, what we propose, what we project to take in, yes. So a separate question that I received. And I sent some of this information out to the council about how many ERUs we have in the near future, at four hundred and nineteen currently available. Depending on where the SDCs end up, you know, if they stay where they're at now, that's one number. If we increase them, that's a different number. But, you know, a couple of million dollars in SDC revenue over the next four or five years as those four hundred and nineteen ERUs develop. So not, not a huge amount of money at this point in the going to mitigate rate increases.
I did that math this weekend is, you know, with the current SDCs for sewer, for example, we'd got about two, two and a half, a little over two and a half million dollars. If we increase them to the proposed rate, we would have six point two, six million dollars. So quite a bit more.
If they develop.
If they develop. Well, that's just the four hundred and nineteen that I assume. Right. But so the, the question that I had asked, that he's, he's giving you the same numbers that, that he, that he given me was with the ERUs that have been absorbed right now, how much money have we generated? I just wanted to know.
So I'm sorry, that, that's the conclusion of my staff report. We've got several proposed increases. Happy to answer any further questions about what those increases.
Or we can go to public testimony and then remember, there's a staff report at the conclusion of the public testimony.
I just wanted to clarify, are there any additional fee increases other than the ones in your staff report? Is it just water and wastewater or?
Just water, wastewater and stormwater. Yep. We did planning and building increases several months ago.
Just, yeah, just one quick one. Only because you mentioned about wastewater.
Yeah.
I was more thinking about water and about merging two years together to try to get an equalized rate over the next two years. So you're not missing a budget cycle, but we're lowering the rate one year, but raising it higher in the second year. You talked about debt service being capped on that, on the wastewater side. On the water side, is it equitable that same way? Is it for debt service? Or are we projecting for future spend that maybe we have an opportunity to equalize the rate over a couple of years? Maybe, you know, less in year one, more in year two, and then that drop, drop back down in year three to eleven.
Yeah. So I didn't have time to do that analysis in the few minutes we had between meetings. What I will say is that water, you know, water already has existing debt service from the original Bull Run and Her tie that we're still paying. We've got several loans that we've already executed. I don't have the, the, the projected debt service annual payments in front of me right now. So I can't give you, I would be, I would feel uncomfortable giving you an answer to that question because it would be not validated with anything other than my personal field.
I understand. With all the questions I've seen on social media, that's a question to be answered.
But there was also, and maybe Rob could answer it, there was also, I remember Jenny talking at her last meeting about how we had to kind of quickly get additional money for the Portland project.
The timetable of water is almost even more urgent for wastewater. Dick's here can maybe provide some color, but we've got to start, you know, moving dirt here really soon.
Right. So there was a need for that additional funding to get the loans secured and, and all that.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the amount of money that we're spending on the water side is bam, bam, bam. Like it's the next three years. And that spending is relatively, you know, completed for these big projects. So delaying a rate increase or stretching out the rate increase on the water side certainly would mean a higher increase in the next year or the year after. We got to get to the same revenue generating number.
Yeah, it creates the same amount of dollars spent over two years. I just don't know how critical, because I know we already spent the first thirty one. It's how, how fast are we spending the next thirty one? Is it over the next twelve months? Or it could have been pushed out a little further, therefore pushing it into the, the second year rate increase.
So that the thirty one that we've spent in the next thirty one, that's the wastewater side of, of spending. So on the water side, you know, different spend patterns. In fact, we just had a cash flow meeting today. I mean, quite frankly, the, like Jeff indicated, the urgency in generating additional revenue in water is arguably more than it is on the wastewater side right now just because we're going into a heavy spend period and we don't have all the funding lined up for water. So getting cash on hand is going to be vital and making sure we have the ability to float the projects.
An answer I didn't know, so I'm curious to hear about.
All right. Cool. Thank you, Tyler. We'll go ahead and move ahead with public testimony. For each person providing testimony, each person providing testimony must provide their name and address for the record. If you do not wish to state your address publicly, please, you must provide it to the city recorder before the beginning of your testimony. This can be done either in person or via email at recorder at CI dot sandy dot OR dot US. If you have documents, maps or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at CI dot sandy dot OR dot US. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Please try to avoid repetition or someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is efficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. In order to offer some public testimony, for those of you joining us here in person this evening, please just raise your hand and indicate you wish to speak at the correct time. If you're participating online, please click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. And if you're participating via telephone, please dial star nine in order to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I'll call on each person when it's your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to five minutes to testify. The recorder, city reporter will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. I will now call for any testimony on the proposed ordinance.
Does it say ordinance? Let's just say resolution. That's my fault. Sorry about that.
No problem. Proposed resolution.
Looking for any raised hands in the audience, Mayor? Seeing none, looking on Zoom for any raised hands. Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
All right. Tyler, you have a staff recap recommendation?
Yes, the recap would just be that, you know, we've updated all the, the rate models to ensure we have the most reliable and accurate information that we have to date. And that indicates that we need to do a thirty six percent rate increase for water, sixteen percent for wastewater and a two dollar per month increase in stormwater. It's in alignment with what was presented in the budget and adopted in the budget about a year and a half ago and will keep us on track for completing our infrastructure projects on the utility side.
Your fault. Thank you. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Any questions for the public hearing?
For a second?
Also.
Motion by Councilor Walker and a second by Councilor Hockinson to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries. All right. We're open for discussion or any additional questions for staff, anyone we have. It's not fun to raise, raise. We all pay them. We're all neighbors and residents here in this community. But we're going to get something that we'll talk, knowledgeable about. So I think it's the prudent move at this time.
Has the city of Portland given us any indication of the high low of what water rates potentially can be with them? Not bulk rates?
Yeah. So, you know, we have, now this isn't answering your question, but we have the, the wholesale agreement for the purchase rates. We, gosh, two meetings ago, adopted the framework of the IGA for cost sharing. I don't have an update on anything, Dick, nothing from either of you. Yeah. So we still don't know what the, what that cost sharing is.
Are you, is it, was that your question or were you asking about what, what is Portland's retail rates to their customers going to be after they do the thing?
They don't know that either.
Yeah. Okay. So I wasn't sure which side you were asking.
I'm just looking at a project that's increased by three hundred million dollars just in this year. What I do recall was that it, we're only paying for the water we use, which is not the, you know, what, right now we're paying for water, whether we use it or not.
That's right. There's no longer a minimum purchase.
Right. And so there was a.
So we know minimum and with Alder Creek at full capacity, we, in theory, that first year, we won't need any. And years after will slowly ramp up based off whatever growth we have. So we'll be taking small percentages for the first bit. I was just reminded that we have in the master. I was just reminding that we have in the master plan, we develop our other water resources. For the ten fifty years out to where we can continue to keep that full run minimum. But that would be an ideal solution, I think.
How, how much of our rate actually pays off the debt service?
Existing debt service or?
Existing. Yeah, it goes back to my question, and I, I totally understand, and I'll say this to the council. We need, we need more money and we need an increase. I, I'm questioning is, do we need as much of an increase in year one? Or can we spread it out over two years? Um, and I don't know that answer. And so it depends on. How much of that money collection you're taking in twenty twenty five. Actually pays down debt service, or do we use to acquire more capital to, to do more work? And I, and I do know the timeline is from mid to late twenty twenty seven, so I'm just talking about one year versus two and. Not reducing it, just equalizing it. So I don't even know if it's possible.
Yeah, so. Existing debt service in the water fund is about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year today. We've secured other loans that are not being repaid yet because we don't start paying those until we draw down the loan in full and close out the project. Once those loans are fully drawn down. Uh, on the water side, that would be end of twenty twenty seven substantial completion, uh, or. Substantial completion on the projects would be earlier in twenty twenty seven, then we have a couple of months to certify that it's completed and business organ comes out and does a. Check and make sure everything's, you know, done before they close out the loan. And so we would then start repaying, uh, on those loans, probably mid twenty twenty eight. Um, depending on, you know, the exact closing date. I don't have those, uh, debt schedules in front of me. But, you know, the existing loans. I had to take a stab is probably a million dollars in the loans that we've. Secured but not closed, and then we still have a funding gap of. Forty million dollars that we need to identify and start building up reserves, making sure we have the coverage ratio in place. So. You know, I can't give you an exact answer on that.
We're not short of funds right now to pay our existing debt service.
Not the existing debt service, but we are, we will be short on funds in the future.
Correct, right.
Yes.
Right, but not, not today.
Qualify for the loans that we need to get. That's why it's built into this rate model. You have to have that, that reserve to even qualify to get them. And we're going in for freshwater, we're going into the spending crunch. We gotta have those loans. We gotta have that money set aside. I don't think shifting freshwater out is viable.
Yeah, I'm just asking. I don't know.
I checked the, um, there, there's a monthly budget report and stuff and I kinda was thinking the same question you're asking. About, you know, how much are we paying and all? And it's under department one fifty two water capital improvements. The revenue total that we have is like eleven point eight million dollars. But the expenses that we have, when you consider the Portland and the Alder Creek projects and the loan principal and the loan interest and all that. It's like eighteen million. So, uh, we have a contingency of six million to kind of, cause there's, the costs are actually even more, but. It looks like you're, you know, at least. You know, worth about twelve million dollars that you need right now and we only have. Uh, eleven million right now, so.
Yeah, wha- what I will say is that, you know, we had budgeted these rate increases to go into effect in July and we've already delayed them six months, so. Um, you know, we're already a little bit behind the eight ball currently. And, and for good reason, right? We wanted to make sure that the rate models had updated project costs and had, you know, accurate accounting and. Um, and make sure that we, you know, had everything dialed in as, as accurately as possible. So, you know, we're already, uh, on, behind the ball, um, for this fiscal year. We think that that will be, you know, that we'll be able to recover from that. Um, the rate model shows that we will be able to recover from that, but. Delaying it is going to just. It, it's certainly just. It just makes next year's that much higher, right? So, I mean. I don't know what the impact would be. We could certainly run that analysis if you, you know, if that was the council's desire to try to minimize water a little bit this year and, and. Do more next year. But it, it's not gonna, it doesn't solve the issue for me. It's gonna, we still need to generate that same amount of revenue over the next. Two, three years so that we have everything in place. And to councillor Hokinson's point, um, you know, we need to be able to show that we. Have rates that support the debt service that we're trying to take out. And so while we have not secured the funding for. Uh, primarily the, the Portland Sandy pipeline, we need to be able to show the lending agency that our rates support. The debt that we are trying to take out and that's what adopting a thirty six percent rate increase does it. It sets the groundwork for telling the lender, yes, we could pay this.
All right, is there a motion?
To adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty five.
I move we adopt the resolution twenty twenty four dash. Sorry.
Twenty five.
Twenty five, thank you.
Sure, a second.
I'll say.
There's a, a motion by councillor Hokinson and a second, uh, by councillor Sheldon to adopt resolution twenty four. Twenty twenty four dash twenty five. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nays.
Nay.
Motion carries. Uh, with that, let's move ahead to. Public hearing resolution twenty twenty three to twenty four, the extension of the moratorium. I will open public hearing twenty twenty four dash twenty four at seven forty four PM. Sir, any abstentions from the hearing body? Are there any conflicts of interest? All right, Josh, are you here with the staff report?
I sure am.
All right, sir.
I'll keep this pretty brief. Your moratorium that's currently in effect expires tomorrow. This, uh, resolution would extend it for additional six months. Uh, it makes no changes to the terms of the moratorium that you previously mentioned. It's just a straight six month extension. Because statutes require you to revisit at least once every six months.
All right. Um, with that, we will move ahead to public testimony. Uh, each person providing testimony must provide their name and address for the record. If you do not wish to set your address publicly, you must provide it to the city recorder before you begin your testimony. That can be done either in person or via email. By sending it to recorder at CI dot Sandy dot OR dot US. If you have documents, maps or letters you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at CI dot Sandy dot OR dot US. The staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. Even if that's all you say. To offer public testimony, for those of you joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand. Uh, if you indicate at the proper time to indicate you wish to speak. If you're participating online, please click the raised hand button. If you're participating via telephone, dial the star nine button in order to raise your hand. I will call on each person once your turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to five minutes to testify. Uh, city reporter will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. I'm now calling for any testimony on the proposed ordinance.
Hey, mayor, not seeing any hands raised here in the room. Checking on mine. Mayor, I don't see any raised hands.
Thank you for that. Um, I. How funny, I changed scripts at the wrong moment. Um, Josh, do you have the staff recap and recommendation?
Mayor and council, you heard during the work session earlier today about the great progress the city is making to address the wastewater issues and that there's still a lot of work to be done. And because there's still a lot of work remaining to be done, that's why it's necessary to extend this moratorium for the additional six months. That's staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Um, with that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Sir, a second.
Certainly.
Motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Mayton to close the public hearing. I will close the public hearing at forty seven PM. Uh, discussion or questions?
Ma'am, sorry, mayor, I'm not sure who to vote. We, we had a motion to second.
Oh, I'm so sorry. All those in favor to, um, close the public hearing signify by saying aye. Opposed nays. Motion carries. I'll now close the public hearing at seven forty seven.
Never mind.
Thank you, yeah. Um, all right, discussion, questions or, um, a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four.
I have one comment that I'd like to just make sure that. I'm supporting this, but I, I want to make sure before we do another, uh, moratorium that we have time ahead of time to talk about. The, um, ERU time limits and the reversion back to the city if developers aren't moving. I want to make sure that. Developers who are holding those ERUs are making progress and if they're not, if somebody else is ready to make progress, that we make those ERUs available to them, so. Want to make sure that we don't run up against the wire. We have plenty of time to talk about that before the next vote.
All right, thank you. Agreed. Um, with that, is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four?
I'll make a motion, we adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
Sirs.
A second.
Thank you. There's a motion by councillor Sheldon and a second by councillor Smallwood, uh, to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty four. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nays, motion carries. All right, moving ahead, third public hearing. I will open public hearing, uh, for ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twenty three at seven forty nine PM. Any abstentions from the hearing body? Any conflicts of interest? Kelly, staff report.
Thank you, mayor. I hear the stir behind me of people really. So I, I have Josh up here to assist me on this one. There's a lot of the changes that we made to these two. Chapters were with close consultation with our city attorney. And a few things to be quite honest, if you have questions on the changes. He's the guy. It will be me. Um, so as you'll probably remember, uh, the mayor formed a code enforcement task force. Uh, following up from council goal to kind of look at our code enforcement procedures. The task force, uh, met in early September. They had a bunch of recommendations. Um, we then discussed those as a full body. I think it was on October seventh. And we outlined a bunch of different code changes that will be coming before you over the next probably year or so. This is kind of the first one and this, and the reason why this is the first one is because this. Chapter one sixteen and one eighteen are kind of. They oversee exactly how we go about doing violations and fines for the entire municipal code. So we felt, felt like this was the most prudent way to start is to go to this first. Uh, one of the other reasons why we're going through this one first is because. The majority of the code modifications, again, just like the one I brought to you guys last month, have not been modified since the seventies. And so they're just really outdated at this point, so we just really need to, uh, dive in and make some code edits. As you'll, as you'll see in the staff report. We're recommending, and this is at the recommendation of our city attorney, complete removal of chapter one sixteen. Uh, one, one point one six is only, I think, a paragraph in length. It was last updated in nineteen seventy five. There's many reasons for removal of this, but chiefly is that we don't treat violations of the city code as criminal offenses, misdemeanors. Um, and if you, if you want us to go more into that on, on the reasons why we wouldn't. Continue to include chapter one one six in our municipal code. I would ask that you ask those questions to Josh. He'll, he'll be able to explain. Those reasons. But as you'll see in the staff report, that's the main reason is that they're not criminal offenses. And then chapter one eighteen, uh, I'm sorry, I call it, that's how I call them, but it's one point one eight. It was last revised in nineteen eighty five. The majority of that chapter has not been revised since nineteen seventy nine. The majority of the modifications that were made in this chapter, so section one. One eight, zero, one, zero, zero, two, zero, zero, three, zero. These were mainly made by Josh as well. Um, kind of modifying those code sections to keep up with new industries. Stand, not new industry standards, standards that have changed since the seventies and, uh, early eighties. So just modifying it to be up to date. He, uh, also recommended that we made some modifications. To some of the terms and then also. Removal of some of the definitions and relying on definitions in other chapters of the municipal code. So really just taking a first look at this for forty years and making some pretty sweeping changes across that chapter. The last thing, which is I think the most interesting part to the council, uh, and to staff for the most part. Is the section one point one eight point zero five zero modifications. So the, these modifications are really the meat and potatoes of, of what you're reviewing tonight. I would say the rest is kind of more legal. Uh, changes, but in this code section. This, how we modeled this was based on a desire from the council for two things to have. More fine amounts. That would be, um, related to different violations within the municipal code. So right now, you know, we have the one fine amount. Um, and then if you go into the municipal code in the different chapters, some of the chapters speak to actual fine amounts. Like sign code, for example. Says a hundred dollars. So as you, as you'll probably remember in early October when we talked. We'll be actually going through those code chapters and removing fine amounts from all the code chapters and referring back to one point one eight. And similar to how they did it in the city of Bend and the city of Gladstone, those two cities actually have really. Well-written code sections for this very thing. Is they actually breaking up into classes of different, in fact, infractions? So if you look at the code modifications. We've broken it up into class A, class B and class C infraction. Uh, consistent with what was reviewed by the code enforcement task force and then again in early October by the full council. Those would be a thousand five hundred and two hundred and fifty dollars. So we're just, it's the exact thing you already reviewed two months ago. And the removal of the not to exceed five hundred dollars. The, the one caveat is you'll see over the next year, as I bring code sections to you. They won't say the amount in the different chapters anymore. They're going to refer back to this and they'll either say a class A, class B or class C infraction. So it's, it's similar to how a lot of cities are now doing it. In the meantime, we did. Write in. If you look in one point one eight point zero five zero, C will cover us in the meantime. So basically that's saying that any code section which doesn't listen infraction, an A, B or C. It automatically reverts to a class B infraction. And that, that clause is in here because it's going to take a year or two to go through the whole code and modify it. And in the meantime, we'll rely on that code provision for a lot of the chapters until we've had time to go back through them. And then the last two more things on this, um, trying to stay as brief as possible here. One of the other things that we took from the code enforcement task force discussions and also from past council input. Is that council wants a fine escalation clause. So as you'll see in one point one eight point zero five zero. E, it says that if there's a second infraction for the same violation within a hundred and eighty calendar days. It's punishable by a fine up to double the amount said forth above. So just for example, a class A infraction, if somebody did it within a hundred and eighty calendar days, the second one. Then the next time they get a fine or a penalty, it'd be a two thousand dollar penalty instead of a thousand dollars. The two other little things I just want to make sure everybody understands is that. We will be coming back before you and I'll have to bring this to the planning commission as well to get their input. But in title seventeen, chapter seven point zero six. Is for enforcement of just title seventeen, because of course it has to be that way. So I'll work closely with Josh and we'll model chapter seventeen point zero six to be similar with what you're reviewing tonight. So that they'll be pretty similar and I'll, I'll be doing that the first half of next year. And then. The last thing I wanted to point out. The last thing I wanted to point out is that you'll probably see tonight that we have not had a chance yet. To come up with a creative solution for those irreversible infractions that we talked about. That is still coming forward and I will be bringing that back before you as a body. And that might in the next year take another slight, it might happen in this code chapter. So within another year from now, we might be revisiting. Section one point one eight point zero five zero to add some additional language around the irreversible code infraction. But I, we, we honestly have just not had time to even discuss it, Josh and I, or to research it more. And I don't want the rest of these code changes to wait until that occurs, because it might be some months from now still. So I just wanted to point that out that we haven't forgotten about it and it's still on our to-do list. Josh, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add.
I probably should have brought this up before, so I apologize. Maybe I'm wrong in writing it. I have no problem with the code at all, except for. The use of pronouns, um, they shouldn't be gender neutral. And I don't know if that's our code requirement or not, um, but there's a lot of. He, she, and his and hers, and it should say their. Um, and be more general neutral. I thought that was part of clear objectives, criteria, but I could be wrong.
So, so was, and I think I, I tried to catch it wherever we can. If you see some additional ones, we could definitely change it when I.
Yeah, I mean, either before you adopt it. That's in this copy right here. It's a test.
What's that?
There's a half dozen of those in this.
The, the, all the ones I found, I changed to his, her, or.
His, her now. Is that your preferred over there, or just him, or? I think that's what he's asking, because right now.
That's, that's why I've been doing it for the last thirteen years since I worked here, whenever we're doing the, is changing it to his, her, or she, he. If you want me to even be more. Um, gender neutral than that.
That's what I'm saying.
I would need council direction. I didn't, I didn't think that was the direction I'd been given in the past. I thought it was to speak to two pronouns, and that's what I've been doing. I, I thought going beyond that.
I just want to abide by state law. Other than that, I don't care to make any kind of statement.
Well, I was thinking of my prior state experience. When I was changing, when I was changing stuff in my prior state role, I was changing everything to general neutral. I don't know if that's a requirement for city or not, but that at the state level, that's what we were doing. Um, within our agency when I worked there, I'm not there anymore, but all code, anything I write today is generally neutral. I was just, when I saw that in there, I thought. That's a, that's not what I'm obsessed into, so I just wanted to ask.
I mean. Without making a little statement, I'll say I think his and his slash her or he, she is gender neutral personally. Um, but in the future, if I get council direction, I'd be perfectly happy to even make it more neutral than that.
Sure, but let me put it this, my question is, wait, you believe we're currently in compliance?
I believe we are.
Josh, is.
I'm, I'm not aware of any legal requirement on cities to use they or their in gender neutral pronouns. I think, I think there's probably a. A state level policy directive to do that for state agencies.
All right. Uh, I question.
Yeah. Um, I have several questions, I'm sorry. Um, so the cheapest, you know, like somebody's caught smoking in the park, two hundred and fifty bucks. The cheapest fine is two hundred and fifty bucks, right? For C.
If you were to adopt this and then, um, yeah, if, if, so let me clarify that. So yes, that would be correct. Although without knowing that code section by heart, it might be a five hundred dollar fine right now, because. If it doesn't, it's not going to say a class C infraction, so it might revert to that class B for now.
Cheapest, the cheapest, the least amount they're going to get off is two hundred. Okay, so then my other question had to do with like, um, if trees are cut down, you know, developer cuts a tree down. Does that, you know, is it per tree? Is it, you know, stumpage? How does, you know, where's all that come into play? That's another question.
So currently, that's a great question, actually, because currently seventeen oh six. Would still override this code chapter, and it's a fine up to a thousand dollars per tree, is how we've interpreted it. That's one of the things that in the Code Enforcement Task Force meeting where a few of you attended, um. That's going to be one we're going to be looking to increase slightly.
And then it's double per tree. The second effects.
Correct, right. That'd be correct, yeah.
And then, like, if somebody is, um. Given a, I guess, a, a citation in the park or something, you know, and somehow they get excluded, as I understand it, this may be from Chief Husky, um. They get excluded, but then, you know, we talked about exclusions for thirty days, but if they do it again or something, exclusions for up to six months or three months or something like that. There was discussion around that, I remember, maybe with Tyler and Jeff or something. And so I'm just curious as to how that exclusion policy. Versus this uh approach works. Is it overlapping or, or how?
So the exclusion policy, as I recall, is outlined in the park rules section of the code. Rochelle and her team are working on. Um, some draft amendments to the park rules, and so we bring that uh probably early twenty twenty five. Uh, and we get that. The intent is to have some more stringent exclusion policies, because currently it, it's. A repeat offender issue, right?
Is violation of an exclusion a criminal issue, or is it civil?
Code, I had to research that. I think it's, I don't think it's. That can be trespass. It can be criminal.
So if it's criminal, it wouldn't apply, the section wouldn't apply, so while I'm bringing up.
I wouldn't, yeah, we wouldn't kind of probably get that. And then my last thing is, does the judge have any, uh, uh. Decision space or, you know, whatever to kind of say, well, you know, it does be in here, but I'll uh charge a C.
That was my question, because we say not to exceed. We don't say exactly this amount, so.
I'll leave that to Josh.
Yeah, that, that's typically how these are structured. It's a maximum fine. Judges have discretion to impose a lower fine when, you know, there's extenuating circumstances or what have you.
Correct. All right, I've not seen our current judge impose a lower fine. Uh, she's very much by the book, and so if it says a C, it, I would be shocked if it was not C when she. Uh, is, is holding court.
All right, I'm going to move ahead to public testimony. Um, each person providing testimony must provide their name and address for the record. If you do not wish to state your address publicly, you must provide it to the city recorder before you begin your testimony. This can be done either in person or via email by sending it to recorder at C I dot Sandy dot O R dot U S. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must be formally placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder at C I dot. Sandy dot O R dot U S, and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. Please try to avoid repetition if someone else has already expressed the same thoughts. It is sufficient to state that you agree with the statements of a previous speaker. In all my years, that's yet to occur. They never do that, uh, even if that's all you say. To offer public testimony. Uh, for those joining us in person this evening, please raise your hand to indicate you would like to speak. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial the star nine button in order to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. I will now call on each person when it's their turn to speak. Each participant will receive up to five minutes to testify. And the city recorder will let you know when you have twenty seconds remaining. I'll now, I will now call for testimony on the proposed ordinance.
Mayor, we did have one hand here in the audience.
On your phone, please. Just remember to state your name and address for the record.
Linda Malone, one seven seven four zero Bluff Road, Sandy. And my question is, I know that we've become a bigger city. In the last twelve years since I left, but code used to be strictly a complaint-driven. Thing. Do we have a larger department now that goes out and seeks out code violations? I mean, I'm, other than, say, like a developer cutting down twenty trees when he didn't have permission to. But how many times do we actually cite someone in the park for smoking? How many times do we actually cite someone for having a sidewalk in front of their house that has a lip in it, unless we had somebody call and complain about it?
Yeah, I'll let staff go, but I, I just speak for council, tell you for about a term, but we've taken a lot more of an aggressive stance towards.
On code enforcement? Do you have actual, other than Mr. Moody?
Yeah, we've hired an additional.
You have two code enforcement people.
Code enforcement.
Who actually go out and investigate.
Yeah, so Officer Moody, I'm understanding he's still kind of within the police department. We have an additional one now that's what kind of works side by side with Kelly. That handles more of kind of those planning type deals that.
The, the code enforcement in my neighborhood has come from neighbors banding together with a. An egregious person who's parked with a derelict car, you know, and we have made numerous complaints and got it taken away.
Our hope would be that we're ahead of it, we're ahead of it now before it gets that egregious. That's the hope.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but without being too, um, punitive.
That's the balance.
Yeah.
Two, two, two responses. First of all, we encourage everybody to use the My Sandy app to report things that they see. It's, it's very easy, simple. And second was, ha- having said on the, uh, the, this code enforcement, whatever we call ourselves, task force committee. Our intent is compliance, not fines, right? So, but we have to have the fines, the stick to come back if they not compliant, so.
Yeah, so there are carrots there.
Absolutely. The code enforcement guy is going to work with whoever, as long as they're willing to work with them, we'll never see a fine. Only if it's just keeps going on and they're not, they're not.
Yeah, I am, I'm pleased to hear that, because I wouldn't want us to go directly to intolerance and punitive. You know, fines against people, because we have a lot of people who either may ma- may not be aware of the code. And hopefully they're made aware of it before they're actually fined five hundred dollars or have to come before the court. But, um.
Or a physical problem.
I'm pleased to see that it's not just complaint-driven, because that was always, we would tell people that came to council, oh. You know, just complain about, that's how our code enforcement goes. We don't have enough people to go out there and catch everybody, so you're our eyes and ears. Um, but it'd be nice to have it be, um, so onerous that people, you know, start knocking on their neighbors. Okay, thank you.
Really appreciate it. All right, any other testimony?
Mayor, not seeing any raised hands in the audience, so with a line. And Mayor, not seeing any raised hands online.
All right, Kelly, you've got the staff recap.
Yeah, I'll follow up Linda's question. Um, I think you guys did an excellent job already, but I will add that. We, yeah, the fines are a last resort, however, as councils, we're well aware of from updates that I post. We've had some pretty egregious violations last year, year and a half. With people setting their own house on fire and. Other, a few other obstacles where we've had to actually have people removed, because the dangerous situations they're creating for their neighbors. Um, and so. This will give us just a little bit more of an ability to enforce the code on. For those cases where there is just no compliance other than the fine route. Is it, is not our preferred route, but it does happen, and sometimes that's the only route to take, uh, just like for police officers, so. Um, yeah, with that, um. Thank you for all the input and help on guiding me to write this up, how we've written it up, and I recommend that council adopts the ordinance.
Thank you. Um, with that, is there a motion uh to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Sir, a second. Awesome. Uh, I'm going to hope it's a just got, I'm making a battle of names, dude. What's the, how?
Hanley.
Huh?
Hanley.
Hanley, all right, I'm going to give this a shot here. Uh, motion by councillor Sheldon, a second by councillor Hanley. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, I was an aye.
You probably can't see her name right over there, can you?
Or, no, yeah. Yeah, I can't see it, yeah.
Trying to throw you a bone.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll give you a sticky next week.
Right, um, all right, so with that, um, let's get to a decision. Um, unless there's discussion, I will call for the first reading. I'm going to go ahead and call for the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three.
Mayor, this ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three, an ordinance to standardize code enforcement processes through updating civil infraction procedures.
All right, is there a motion to approve the first reading?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty four dash twenty three.
Sir, a second.
I'll second it.
There's a motion by councillor Hanley and a second by councillor Sheldon to uh approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. If that's unanimous, I will call for the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three.
Sir, this is an ordinance to standardize code enforcement processes through updating civil infraction procedures.
Um, all right, um, with that, is there a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three?
Move to adopt the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty three.
Sir, a second.
I'll second it.
So much my councillor Hokinson, a second by councillor Walker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion carries. Thank you so much. Appreciate you helping your job. All right, moving ahead with our agenda, um, you're up with our report from the city.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, uh. Excuse me, one of the things that I had meant to mention. Uh, during the. Staff report on the utility rate increases is that uh we will be um compiling a, a one-page insert to include in the December utility bills. Notifying community members of the rate increases that were adopted and outlining the, um. The reason for that, so the capital improvement projects, where the money's being spent. Um, so that'll go out in the December bills with the rates that are uh then reflected on the January bills. So just, uh. Wanted to make sure that you all knew that that was um on the docket for us.
Hey, Tyler.
Yeah.
Does that go, um, like I just get mine by email? And will it go? Because I never get the little newsletter on that I used to get when I had a paper copy.
Yeah.
You don't get it when you get the, uh, E, E version.
Tyler Wallace and I talked about that last week, and we're going to figure out a solution.
Okay.
For that problem. Um, so don't have the answer to that yet, but we realized that there was a. A disconnect with the email bills, uh, so we'll figure out how to either get a link in that email. Um, so that it at least will direct you to a city webpage, or if we, we can do a graphic or something, we'll figure out how to do that, but make sure that it gets. Gets there for both the paper bills and the electronic bills. Um, just a couple of events that are coming up, so you've probably already. Seen many of the storefronts in downtown decorating for the Merry Makeover Challenge. It's ongoing. Uh, winner will be announced December twenty seventh. Um, but it's, it's really starting to look like Winterfest again, as you drive through town with all the lights and decorations and. Uh, it's, it's a really, um, nice feeling when you drive through town. I have a. A, uh, parent friend at my kid's school who, uh, I ran into their dad, and I drove through Sandy on the way to Mount Hood. It looked so great. You guys have an awesome downtown. And so it's just nice to hear that, like, organically from people that don't live locally, uh, recognizing that our downtown is really spruced up during the holidays and. Get that positive feedback. Uh, this Saturday, we also have the pet pictures with the Grinch at six P M in Minna Park, so bring your furry or. Scale friends. I think there was a gecko and something else last year as well.
Beer and dragon.
Beer and dragon, okay. Is that yours?
No. I don't do reptiles.
Okay.
Turtles are okay, but that's.
That's about it.
Draw the line, yeah.
Fair. Uh, so that's this Saturday at six P M. Uh, also wanted to just remind the council that, you know, on the agenda, we do have a link to, uh, the staff reports that are updated by. Uh, various departments. Some are admittedly better than others at getting those updated in a timely manner, but many of them are up to date, and there's lots of good information in there on. Uh, attendees to various programming, um, opportunities that we've had, upcoming events, uh, just department stats, what they're working on, so, um, keep an eye on those as. As you have time. And then the last, uh. Topic for me, um. We need to schedule a goal setting for budget. We are at that time again. So two years ago. I think we did an all-day Saturday event, if I remember correctly, and then prior to that was a, uh, hybrid, um, you know. Covid time, uh, webinar on Zoom. Um, I assume the in-person is preferable, but certainly open to conversation around that, and then. Uh, trying to gauge interest if the council's interested in doing, uh, a couple weeknight meetings or an all-day on a weekend. Uh, we can certainly send out a, a doodle poll or something, Survey Monkey, to, to find times, but trying to get an idea of. If you're looking at evenings or weekends or what works best for the council, so we can get some proposals put together. And you can certainly just send me an email.
Oh, man, I'm just thinking like, oh, this football playoff coming on you.
I, I, I mean, I, I would much rather look for a weekend, uh, than in the past. Doing it on a couple of weeknights, uh, those are very long nights, ten, eleven o'clock, and a couple of those in a week are brutal, so.
They're late and you lose.
Not.
Yeah, you lose some momentum too when you cut it off.
I think you retire.
Yeah.
The doodle poll.
Well, it's not a doodle poll. We'll shoot for Saturdays in January, um.
That's, I'm just wondering about there.
Yeah.
No, great, that's a great point.
Thought your guys' location last time was awesome, that, that the bank looked great. You're looking around, people spots.
What was this? Did we meet at the bank?
Well, we did that for.
Uh, we did do the fire station.
Fire station previously.
That's right.
Um.
It's a funky smell there.
Yeah.
Building should have broke to the ground.
Yeah.
If you've ever been in the basement, uh.
Okay, go ahead. We'll, uh, we'll put together a doodle poll, um, and get some dates sent out and get something on the calendar. Thank you.
I actually like the space over the, um. The store. Sorry.
I'll stop that.
Museum there upstairs.
That's nice. At least you do it in a bumper building.
Doesn't smell yet.
Just kidding. All right.
Uh. Actually, one more, I think you've gathered. Staff appreciation dinner.
Yes.
Did you want to mention that?
Thank you, yes. Yeah, so we have scheduled for Thursday, December twelfth. Uh, holiday staff appreciation, um, lunch will be held at the community center. Uh, council is obviously invited to that, and you have the ability to attend, please RSVP. Um, if you don't want to actually RSVP, be in the link, just give me a head nod after this meeting, so we can make sure we get it. Approximate head count, um, for food that day. Uh, last year, I think it was a, a great event. Staff really appreciated, um, both just having time to. Gather together instead of in our individual departments, uh, just getting some, you know, recognition and, and acknowledgement for all of their work during the year, so hopeful that. This will be another, um, positive event and on the twelfth, on the twelfth, yeah.
Great. All right.
Thank you, councillor.
Thanks. A couple of other things, um. First of all, Winterfest of the, the tree lighting this year without the downpour and everything, felt like I was in a Hallmark movie. It was really creepy. Felt like as an extra on a set, you know? It was really crappy. Felt like I was an extra on a set, you know? But uh, kind of cool that our little town could pull that off and uh, my kids who've been uh, came down to visit. Uh, absolutely loved it. And the ones who live here love it. So anyway, i- it's great. I do want to mention that the big bulbs that we have, I should, coming into town from grass, um, by the fountain. The lighting on those is out. It looks like they're set up for lighting, but it hasn't been on for a few days, so. Probably should have called since sooner, but I'll pass it on this way. And um, switching gears to Sandy Net. Uh, I believe we're on the schedule for a work session in two weeks, the next council meeting, to talk about the Sandy Net Master Plan. We asked for, we budgeted for. It looks really good. I'm very, very happy with it. To me, it's one of the. More substantive per page or per pound plans that we've had, you know, so it's pretty tight in terms of the the media content. And it really addresses the things I was looking to get in terms of. What makes sending it viable? Where should it expand and why? Uh, how should rates be structured relative to others? It, they addressed a lot of things. We didn't pay much money for it. Just really, really impressed. I'll just take this opportunity to ding Eco Northwest one more time publicly. Um, that's what a plan should look like, you know, something useful, not boilerplate. Um, so anyway. That'll be sent out. Do read it. Uh, bring your questions. We're gonna go through it from a work session uh, in two weeks. Uh, so if you have a chance, it's not a long read. It'll only take ten, twenty minutes. It's not like reading one of those giant ones, so.
We will get it sent out before the agenda packet, though, just to make sure you have time to to review it.
Cool. Second thing is we had interviews for the Sandy Net uh, board, because we. We're at that cycle and uh, great turnout. Currently have, I think, seven members on the board. I think three or four positions that are. But all the candidates are great. The question I wanted to ask. You is we have one more candidate than we have spots, and that's not. This, there's no magic to a Sandy Net Advisory Board, whether it's seven or ten or whatever. Um, it's not a voting thing that's going to, it, as we talked about it in the team. A split vote doesn't mean anything in an advisory board. You need to have the board completely behind you, so. Are you willing if, if we end up, we had one candidate who we were adjusting a date for, but he's already serving and doing a good job, assuming that he interviews and wants to continue. We would have a qualified candidate. Is there any issue with modifying their charter to include an eighth member? Would any of you have any opposition to that?
The only question I would throw at Jeff, I guess, is this like, is there a cons- is there consistency across all the committees of like a certain membership?
Yeah, they're, I mean, they're all at seven except for the economic development board.
We did, if you, you probably just forgotten, because there's been a lot of stuff, but we did that several years ago. Yeah, because, because there wasn't consistency. So is there reluctance to go to, to allow us to go to eight for something like this?
Well, yeah, I would kind of push back a little bit, only because if we allow you to go to eight, then we've got to look at every other advisory board and do the same thing in my mind. So, because it's just like, I'm. Would have said it in my report, Kathleen may have beat me to it, but we just did the perks and or or Lindy, uh, the perks board, uh, and we had some great candidates and it's that.
Same, same with her.
Yeah, and the crust, the question was brought up, you know, could we expand this board? And my response was. We're bound by bylaws. We already have bylaws in place, and so that would be my only.
Be modifying the bylaws to do that. It's not just a.
No, yeah.
Yeah, so if you're, if we're objecting to modifying the bylaws for consistency's sake.
That would be my only pushback. Would just be that, then we'd have to look at all the boards in my mind, and we'd have to do it for all of them.
That doesn't stop, I mean, we, we know the nature of these committee meetings, you know, the major, we're extending an invitation to come and, you know, participate and all that, but. I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm short term here, but I, but I, but I, my opinion would, I like consistency. Seems like a big step for one.
For some.
One person.
I think what's important to me is that people who are on board show up. Because what happens is, you know, when you don't have full participation, you know, when there's, you know, three or four people missing every meeting. Then you feel like, oh, yeah, it wouldn't hurt to have another extra person, but then again, you know, it's more important to kind of make sure the people who are on there to show up. And if they aren't showing up, somebody needs to kind of call them out, say, you know, hey, it's, you know.
Maybe that's the memo, you know, when you're, you know, from the new mayor or whatever to these committees, you know, afterwards, but saying maybe there needs to be some self policing of. If we have folks that just aren't engaging, showing up to, you know, filling those spots instead of leaving them empty.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not saying that that's happening in that particular committee. It has happened.
I will say, at the Sandy Net for. You know, four weeks ago, I was like, I don't know if we even need a Sandy Net voice.
And now you want to grow it.
And keeping, only because we got a plan and seeing the animation and the excitement from the board about having a plan and a direction.
Yeah.
And then it helps to outline their role as well. Uh, I, I did an about face on that, so.
Interested to see the plan.
Yes. Uh, okay, I'll pass that information on. Thanks. That's it for me.
I mean.
The only thing I wanted to say was that with all of these interviews with the, with the boards, I'm so impressed. With the number of people that are coming out and that want to serve and can. Find a way to utilize them in other, in other areas. That would be amazing. Keep, keep, keep. The most people engaged that we can.
Definitely. Um. Lori, are you gonna mention the um, fire stuff? The dates, the parade and all that? Have you been mentioned that?
Oh, go ahead.
Sure.
Yep, absolutely.
About it than I do.
Nope, you're good.
Go, go. Well, Chris just, he said, um, the Clackamas Fire folks are doing a parade on December thirteenth um, at six P M here in Sandy. The parade route is online. And on Saturday from noon to five at the firehouse is when they'll be doing the collection that they used to do, kind of running along the highway with a boot. Uh, so much safer alternative is to just try to get uh, collections from noon to five at the fire station on Saturday, December fourteenth. Um, the library board, uh, advisory board is meeting Wednesday night to talk about um, some more strategic planning. So I'll attend that meeting. Um, and then the last thing I, or first of all, I, I just always uh. Thrilled every time I go to the park, the Cedar Park, and see all the people there and the excitement that people have about it. Um, there was a lot of folks over the holiday weekend, um, so that's great. And I can just thank everybody's um. Efforts in making that come true. Um, the last thing I would say is today, tonight was really difficult to kind of, you know, I've just been struggling this whole week. Thinking about these rate increases and what they do, and I. Really want to understand better about how these rate increases get calculated. Because. What I, I, you know, I'm pretty sharp with spreadsheets and all that, but you know, there's, there's these projects and then, you know, and then there's the, the near term, you know, what it costs now. What it costs in twenty twenty six, eight, or whatever. There's SDCs and there's utility fees. And there's a lot of assumptions that go into all this, and it all goes into this black box and then comes out. And here's the fee schedule and here's the SDC rates. And I want to understand. I kind of asked for kind of the spreadsheets and stuff, just so that I can kind of understand a little bit better about. How it all comes together and how those SDCs interact with the. The utility fee rates. And does one set the other or one, you know, or not? And I just want to kind of. Understand it more, and I also want to be able to, you know, increase our SDC so that we can rely on those more. And I understand that they're not a sure thing, but as, as they're coming in, we should be able to scout those and then. Periodically recalibrate the, the. Rates that we do have in a way that, you know, if we can reduce it by a couple dollars or something, because we got a flush of SDCs in there, that's. That's something that I think we can afford to do, and every little bit is going to help. So. I am going to try to understand it better. I didn't feel good about having to approve it tonight because it is a big jump. But once I understand it and feel like I, I, you know, have some knowledge of what assumptions we made. I, I want to kind of come back and talk about, you know, is there any flexibility in these assumptions? One of the things that we saw at that last meeting was the cushion. And he talked about fifty percent cushion. And, you know, when I was talking to my husband about that, he says, well, we was just use twenty to twenty five percent cushion, but some, some require more. So those are the kind of assumptions that, you know, a fifty percent cushion when a project is, you know. What, so, you know, fifty million dollars is a huge amount, you know, money. So those are the kind of things that I want to be able to look at and. And assess and see if there's any flexibility um, and just give some input, you know, try to talk about it as a council. So that we all understand it and then uh, you know, give some direction if there is some flexibility. Uh, but at a minimum, we'll all understand exactly how those uh, rates came about. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, uh, Don's point, tree line ceremony was cool. Uh, I just want to give a shout out to Carol Cohen, Cohen uh. Coordinated that uh, something called.
Flash fans.
Flash fans. It looked like a lot of fun. It was, it was, uh, it was cool to see everybody out there doing that, having fun. So um, that was neat. Um, to Kathleen's point, I, I, I want to second what she had to say, but I also really want to add. Uh, I kind of have two questions to that point to a degree. I want to know what, what is our plan? For our ask for this next legislative session going forward? Uh, I, I, I think we should go into there with somewhat of a plan, somewhat of a, a, an ask that's reasonable. With tangible things showing how that's going to affect our rates and our, and our taxpayers. Uh, I didn't, I haven't seen that yet, and so what that needs to look like reading for. From the set of some January. Yes, and then so. We're, we're, we're there. Uh, I, I think unfortunately we had, uh, uh, we had some elections and stuff that kind of slowed this process down. Uh, but we need to, we need to now push the accelerator on that and really start running. So I'd really like to start seeing that, formulating an ask, and then formulating what is a plan to, e- even if it includes. Engaging the community to help us get that plan through by reaching out to their electeds and stuff, yeah, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Lori.
Um, as I alluded to earlier, we had uh, purse board interviews uh, last week. I think all the boards are doing their interviews right now, um, uh. Letters went out, and I think we're still waiting to hear back from a couple of people, so there'll, there'll be more to come. I'm sure by next week for that and uh. Park looks wonderful, as it always does, so um, other than that, that's all I got.
That'll be quick too, same thing everybody else said. I thought the lighting was great. I thought the, you know, walking through the park with the lights was awesome. Um, I got to attend the planning commission um. Since our last uh, meeting and it was, it was good making with a few seats, but we've filled those now, uh, we did that today, so. Um, I have not done an economic development meeting, and we haven't had in a while, so I'll look for that on the calendar. Uh, I'll defer the rest of my time to you there.
Awesome. Uh, not a long report for me, just uh, tree lighting was awesome. I feel like it's getting cooler every year. I, I, I continue to advocate for after the Thanksgiving holiday, though, if it works out, but. Uh, I thought it was really special. Carol Cohen did a great job. Uh, feels like a lot of people turn out for it. Uh, Winter Fest, I told uh, both you and Tyler and Jeff this already, but just for the broader and for, for Shell and her teams see it, you know, uh. That park is just amazing, right? And it gets cooler and cooler every year, and I think that's the like, really hidden little secret that's neat about it is. If you go for the first time, you're there for the first time, but a lot of these communities, you just, you go and it's the same thing every year. That's not what this is, you know? I mean, it has some of those same features, but there's just a little. Add on, right? It feels like every time you walk through each year, you're just a little subtly surprised that there's an addition or an enhancement to it. Um, and that's just for that whole Winter Fest from beginning to end, it's been like that. So I, I love the music. Music I thought was a really neat addition this year. Uh, so thank you for everyone from maintenance to parks. Everyone plays a part in that. It's just, it's awesome. Um, and then kids and everyone's making fun of me because every time there's sun out, I gotta drive by base camp and. See how many people, I, I, I'm surprised that Chief Husky and his team hasn't pulled me over kind of to slow rolling by a park, you know, and looking out the window. Yeah, right, uh, uh, but it, it's pretty cool and knowing, I think, also knowing some of the park stuff that's coming on the heels of this one. It's really, I think, going to put the city on the map or continue to, so really good stuff going on and. One more meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and close out. Thanks, everybody.